All right, welcome everyone. I call the July 7th, 2020 Bothell City Council Meeting to order. We move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings was again extended through today. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with this meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phone in callers during staff presentations, staffs staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advanced notice are able to make comments under the visitor comment portion of the meeting. So at this moment, we'll take a moment, we'll take a moment to call the roll call of council members by your position number on the WebEx call. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Commander McNeil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
All right, in addition, the following city staff are in attendance. City manager Jennifer Phillips, city clerk Laura Hathaway, and city attorney Paul Byrne. So lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines for all of our meeting attendees. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For our council members, if you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up the yellow speaker cards in the lower portion of your screen. I'll call as you as I see them, and this will help avoiding two people speaking at the same time. And please remember to mute or mute your microphone when not speaking and unmute yourself before you start speaking. So the first on the first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing no changes. All right. So it looks like we have some public engagement opportunities. She'll be sharing it momentarily.
It'd be.
Oh, whoops.
Is it showing?
No. Oh, you're not seeing it either? Oh. I.
Sorry. I'm, do you see it now? No. I'll read it. I don't know why it's not showing. End of July, the Park at Bothell Landing Pedestrian Bridge will be demolished. Please take your photos of the old bridge now. And August 2nd through the 8th, Sustainamania Virtual Stavanger Hunt will be taking place. You will, you can answer trivia questions, complete missions, and check in at local parks to win prizes. Please visit our website at bothellwau.gov/sustainamania for more information. Sorry about that, I don't know why it didn't share. Worked in the test.
It worked so well before.
Twice.
All right, well, thank you for those. So on the council committee reports, does anyone have a committee report to share with us? Deputy Mayor Zornz.
It's a little bit of a committee, but I thought it fit best here during our budget discussion, that was the same week that AWC was meeting. And I attended a couple of their classes workshops. One point that I thought, I don't remember that I said this, so if I'm repeating myself, I apologize. Is that they, right before COVID hit us, we were in the middle of talking about amending our protocol manual. And AWC also said that with remote meetings now, that if we do not have anything in our protocol manual about real remote meetings that cities ought to get those in there. So if I wanted to make sure that I covered that, and again, if I'm repeating myself, I apologize.
All right, council member Doer.
Sorry, I just realized I can't report on EAG because I am not the, I attended, but I didn't attend as a city council member, so.
All right, just teasing us. All right, anyone else? All right, city clerk, it sounds like we have two visitor comments this evening.
Yes, we do. The first one is Sarah Gustafson, I can't pronounce her last name. Sarah, are you with us? Let's see if, David Levitan, are you with us, David? These are all on the line.
Okay. All right, so on to next item is consent agenda. Councilmember Doer.
I move approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Agnew.
Second.
Excellent, thank you. So we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda by councilmember Doer, a second by councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, city clerk.
Call your name, please answer yea or nay. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yea.
Mayor Thompson, councilmember Thompson.
Yea.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yea.
Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember Doer.
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, thank you, everyone. So looking like we are on to our next item. So AB 20-87, consideration of Phase 1B Amendment to Progressive Design Build Agreement with the BNB Builders and Miller Hall partnership for the Bothell Fire Station 42 and 45 replacement project. So it looks like we are waiting for Jeff Sperry to present this item. So we'll just give him a minute.
Yeah, we're contacting.
Pop in because we're a little ahead without our visitor comments. Rickets. It is quiet right now. All right, looks like we have Jeff. And we are ready for AB 20-087.
Okay. If you'll give me a moment, just waiting for some consultants to join the meeting as well. Get set up with sharing. All right, I believe everybody's joined. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. I'm joined by design build team Noah Tumi and from BN Builders and Zubin Rao from Miller Hall and our project manager from OAC Services Krista Lutz to assist with any questions at the end. I am here tonight for the consideration of the Phase 1B Amendment to Progressive Design Build Agreement with BN Builders and Miller Hall Partnership for the Bothell Fire Station 42 and 45 replacement project. The Safe and Secure Bond was passed by voters in November of 2018. In November 2019, council approved the city manager to enter into agreement, the Progressive Design Build Agreement for all phases of the project with expenditure for Phase 1A with BN Builders, Miller Hall. High level goals of the bond are to provide two new modern fire stations, reduced reaction times, and layout design for operation to reduce cross contamination for firefighter health. Why Progressive Design? The city project team evaluated several methods of delivery for the project. With the complexity of fire station and to maintain critical service functions, the team chose Progressive Design Build as the delivery method. With Progressive Design Build, we gain the advantage of having coordination of construction of two new fire stations and interim facilities with a total of seven projects while maintaining operational and critical services. Another advantage of Progressive Design Build is the ability to coordinate and stage subcontractors work from one project to the next. Really, another is early collaboration between owner, designer, and builder. Increased opportunity for innovation and efficiency and open book pricing and transparency. Project team and design build team have been busy over the last seven months and have achieved a major milestone by completing Phase 1A. Here's a summary of what was accomplished. Few of the main items are investigation and validation of existing conditions. During this time, the design build team performed several inspections and testing with, which include but not limited to structural, geotech, and site survey. Investigation of over 20 interim sites. The investigation of sites was difficult and time consuming. We looked at over 20 different sites trying to find a feasible site that would house, that would meet all the requirement, code requirements of a fire station and be able to house for sleeping quarters, apparatus bay for equipment, and also to keep the interim fire stations relatively close to the current sites to reduce impacts to call response times. Development to 30% design for permanent stations. Validation of project budget and target estimate. Development of a target schedule. With the concurrent design and construction approach of design build, we are seeing an overall schedule improvement of four months over a consecutive build schedule. As development continues, there is potential that we will see further improvement of the schedule. Phase 1A and target estimate. Currently, the estimate for, from the Phase 1A report estimates total cost at $39.4 million. As we are early in design and at 30% design, this is standard to be within 10% of project budget. As Phase 1B will further design to 60%, this will allow further development of the budget estimate and cost certainty. With the current design at 30%, these are early conceptual renderings that the design build team has provided. Here's a view of Fire Station 42, looking from, looking at the main entry from 185th. Also looking from 185th is the apparatus bay and the reserve apparatus bay. Both will exit onto 185th, which is different from original right now, which they exit on to Beersley Boulevard. This increases the current apparatus bay from four to five and gives us opportunity for reserve apparatus storage. Here's a rendering of the Station 45. This is in Kenyon Park. We're looking at the north, from the northwest view. This station will also include a satellite office for the police department. And here, we're looking at the station from Bothell Everett Highway. And you'll see that there's an added bay. This is an increase from three apparatus bays to four apparatus bays, which will give ability for reserve apparatus at Station 45. The design build agreement is for all three phases of the project. This expenditure is for Phase 1B. We will return to council for approval of expenditure for Phase 2 with guaranteed maximum price of the entire project. Phase 1B scope has several deliverables due. A few to mention is Phase 1B will further the development to 60% design of permanent stations, permitting processes for interim and permanent sites, and develop guaranteed maximum price of the entire project. LEED. Also known as Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. In 2009, the city adopted Resolution 1241. 1241 requires all new municipal buildings over 1,000 gross feet to meet the U.S. Green Building Council's LEED Silver Rating Level or better, using the certification criteria at the time of the adoption of this resolution. The criteria in 2009 was U.S. Green Building Council LEED Version 3. In 2016, the U.S. Green Building Council adopted LEED Version 4. It is much more difficult to obtain a given certification level in LEED Version 4 than it was in LEED Version 3 due to a number of factors. Relevant to this project's achievement targets, LEED Version 4 made many of the performance thresholds more difficult to achieve and added many new requirements across all credit categories. The design build team has done a high level analysis of the proposed new Station 42 and 45. As currently designed to meet the 2018 Washington State Energy Code, it is of the opinion that both stations would likely have achieved a Silver Rating under LEED Version 3. By meeting Washington State Energy Code 2018 and adhering to Healthy In, Healthy Out, the project team can ensure that sustainability goals are met for Resolution 1241. During the analysis, the design build team identified measures necessary to achieve LEED Version 4 Silver Certification. The cost to implement LEED Version 4 level is anticipated to be beyond the amount budgeted for the project and beyond 5% cost of construction as noted in Resolution 1241, Section 5, and is therefore included as an alternate that would require funding outside of the bond proceeds. LEED Version 4 Silver may be added to the scope during future Phase 2 council on, based on council's recommendation. However, it will require additional funds outside of the bond proceeds. Direction on LEED will not change the total base not to exceed amount for Phase 1B. Percent for arts. The city has Bothell Municipal Code BMC 3.75 that establishes funding for the arts. This BMC is set up to perform with typical design bid build delivery method. With Progressive Design Build, there will be no traditional bidding process that would establish the amount for calculation of percent for arts. To stay with the intent of the BMC, the team has used the estimate budget to establish the amount of $70,000 using the process listed in the BMC and the city's calculation form. With setting the amount at $70,000, this will provide certainty to the selected artist and to the design build team during Phase 1B. Requested actions, amend the Progressive Design Build Agreement with BN Builders, Miller Hall Partnership, do approve interpretation of Resolution 1241, Section 5, to meet the intent of LEED Version 3 Silver without obtaining LEED certification, and 3, approve percent for arts in the amount of $70,000. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions.
All right, who has some questions for Jeff, councilmember Doer?
Thank you, Jeff. I have a few questions. So the amount is going up for Phase 2 by 100, is it 100,000? From 2,800,000 to 2,140,000? And what, can you explain what that's based on? Why is it, why is it going up? Because it's just design phase, right?
It's partial design, it is design phase and it's taken it to 60%. But with the project, we're looking at, because of all the interim facilities, purchasing long lead items prior to actual construction such as City Hall and the retro there with getting the new material for outfitting the cubicle spaces. Also for the interim housing for Fire Station 42, we need to purchase a a housing trailer for temporary housing, so this will get the designs process started for that section of it, so the trailer is ready for use.
So we're purchasing the trailer, we can't lease it? And then what, and then what will we do with the trailer when we're done with it?
I may be wrong, we may be leasing it. Noah.
Excuse me, yeah, we are leasing it. We look to both opportunities, both leasing and leasing. The best one for the city was just purely to lease it, so that way you don't have to handle getting rid of or reselling that trailer later on.
Okay, super. So, because I have a concern, I, I'm not really familiar with this process, but we saw earlier in the agenda, there was a slurry seal contract. The engineer's estimate was $100,000 above the actual bid. And I'm concerned, and maybe you can reassure me, that we have not entered into a contract where we're going to be paying 2019 construction costs in a landscape that's very different in 2020, 2021. So how do we know that we aren't going to be stuck paying a price that's higher than the actual context when we go to build?
So we're still early in design and the, the design builder will continue to work with subcontractors and get the best value.
So is there some sort of check on that though, that so that we know that that's happening, so that we know that we're not paying a higher price than we would be if we had gone out to bid? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we do have a third party auditing in place.
Okay.
For this project.
Um, and then I, as far as the LEED 3.0, so is the idea that we would follow the LEED 3.0 checklist? We just wouldn't get certification?
Correct, well, it wouldn't. I don't know that it would, Noah?
I'm actually going to have Zubin answer this one a little bit here, he's the best one to answer that.
Sorry.
Sure, I think, you know, when the team looked at the council bill, you know, our understanding was the intent was to have a LEED Silver building, you know, under, under Version 3 that was current at the time. So we have done an initial analysis using LEED scorecard and, you know, are pretty confident that the designs as they stand right now are representative of LEED Silver design. So, you know, process wise, we haven't talked about too many details about, you know, how we're going to look at that as a team. So I think, you know, that's something we probably need a little bit of direction on moving forward, but we do think the designs are representative of a LEED building.
I mean, there is a certain cachet that comes with the certification. I mean, a lot of this is meant to be, you know, inspirational, aspirational to the community, and so not having that LEED certification bothers me. Will there also be commissioning? Because if, if there's not commissioning, then really it's just, there's no guarantee that the building's actually working as it was meant to or intended. And a lot of the LEED points are actually around building efficiency, which means long-term operations and maintenance cost savings. And so I'm concerned that we might save a million dollars upfront and then end up paying 10 million in building and maintenance operations over the life of the building. So can you speak to that?
Yeah, so, so Noah, I believe, you know, commissioning is, is in our base scope and included in our estimate right now. So, yeah, that's, that's definitely there. Our mechanical engineer has also done initial energy modeling, you know, as appropriate to the schematic design phase. So we are confident that, you know, the, the design parameters we have moving forward are in line with LEED Silver Performance under Version 3.
Have we scoped out and picked out a mechanical system already?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're planning on a VRF system for the station house with a dedicated outside air unit for fresh air delivery with heat recovery. That's for the occupied portions of the station. For the apparatus, we have unique gas-fired unit heaters as a base of design right now and a much lower set point for, for design temperature there.
Okay, because I would be, if I had my druthers, I would put as much money as possible into making sure that we have a low-cost operation and maintenance system put in, even if it costs a little bit more upfront. Because I'm assuming these buildings are meant to last 30 to 50 years. So, you know, 50 years of a lesser system is a lot of money in the end. So I'm just curious if, if we're picking the optimal system for that longevity of the building. It's one thing if we were to lease it for five years, but to own it for 50 or 40, obviously, we're going to reap whatever benefits there are from building efficiency, whether it be water or heat or, or conditioning. So that's my two cents on that. And then is the 70,000 for both fire stations to be split between both fire stations for the 1% for the arts?
The 70,000 is calculated based on the entire project. The determination for when, where the art will be set has primarily been set for Fire Station 42, as that's the one that has the highest amount of traffic, of put traffic and.
So we decided not to spend any, not to put anything at 45 is what you're saying?
There will be a small portion, I believe, going towards 45, but.
Okay. Um. I guess that's my question, or my, yeah, I think that's my questions. I, I confess to being a little bit underwhelmed with the fact that they're just boxes. The designs of the buildings are just really simple, straight boxes, and we're going over budget. So that, that's, you know, from my architect's eye, a little bit of an issue for me, but I'm not there specifying what's going on. So I, I guess I trust. you know, from my architect's eye, a little bit of an issue for me, but I'm not there specifying what's going on. So I guess I trust that's what we can afford. But anyway, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate you answering my questions.
All right, I just want to take a moment to say that we had a couple callers on the line and no.
Sorry, I probably can't read my writing. So they're they're calling and we asked that we're going to text them back when we get through the O A C.
Yeah, after the O A C item.
So we'll take a break and then we'll text them and then we'll come back from break.
All right, great.
Sorry about that.
All right, who has the next question? Comment for this Councilmember Agnew.
Well, thank you, Davina, for asking most of my questions. I just had a question. Did the fire department had any concerns about coming out on one eighty fifth instead of Beersley?
Originally, yes, but after viewing the traffic, the potential of the traffic intersection. The chief decided that there was really no impact as to which way they exit on to.
So are you? Are you going to put some warning lights or or something out there to stop the traffic? Because it's kind of a blind curb. I mean, people are coming around that that are heading south. That could be a potential issue.
Yes, that has been brought up and it says as an alternate for indication on this. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question around the building's future expansion, if necessary. Are we designing anything in for that? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Zubin or Noah?
Sure, yeah, I can jump in. On station forty five, that is, that is quite a tight site with the size of size of the future building. So there's, you know, not a lot of opportunity for expansion there. On station forty two, it's it's also quite a tight site. You know, both of these stations are growing by, you know, more than fifty percent of their current size with, you know, several additional bays at forty two and one additional bay at forty five. However, at forty two, there are some areas reserved for, you know, different training apparatuses and things like that. But in in terms of building expansion, no, they're they're not really accommodating future building expansion.
Okay, so if we look, the reason I'm asking that question is, you know, the northern northern portion of our community is growing pretty rapidly. And forty five does have the additional bay currently. That would be a bit of an expansion, but as we continue to grow up there. Just looking at how we're designing the stations and what benefits we're going to have in the future, if we look twenty thirty years into the future. Are those stations, are those locations going to work? Just having or knowing that information, I think is important. Not that we can do anything about it now, but it's just as we start to do things and design things, we should be looking in the future. Which leads to the the next question I have is Councilmember Doer spoke about maintenance. We have a building, we have a senior center in our community that has been neglected on maintenance. And as we build these new buildings. There are costs associated with maintaining those buildings. And as we are looking at putting heating cooling systems in and the apparatus and all those different things. Are we looking at what those things are going to entail, what they're going to cost us to continue to maintain them over those years? And have we studied that within the budget of building the building?
Yes, we've looked at those items. That's one of our concerns as well from the project team is lifetime maintenance costs and and overall maintenance. Routine maintenance for how often and how needy will a piece of equipment be or a piece of the housing be? We work with Miller Hall and B M B two, and they're very well aware of those items.
That is good. I'm glad to hear that we're we're looking at that. And then lastly, would there be any benefit in these two stations for community rooms?
Right now, both of both of them are do have a conference room built into them, but it's more for staff. Station forty two is having larger conference room, which will also double as right now we have it in the spec as a secondary ECC. Possibility and training, interior training.
There's some possible future opportunity for training other departments within that facility, as well as a potential maybe for future community room or something if needed.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
There were some good points raised and then I ended up with more questions, so I'm apologizing for that. I for station forty two, for some reason, I thought that the plans were being adjusted and the bays were going to be kept where they were. So they would be exiting out on for on Beersley Boulevard, but is that not the case? Are we reconfiguring the bays on station forty two?
Yes, we're configuring the whole reconfiguring the whole site and that's to allocate space for interim housing. And phasing of the project. So the interim housing with the phasing will all be onsite during construction. There will not be any offsite interim housing.
Is the whole building going to end up being demoed then? You know, ultimately, is that what we're looking at?
Through phases, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, that that changed my my understanding of how it was going. I did want to say that I noticed that it was going to be going almost, you're anticipating that it's going to go almost four million dollars over what the bonds were for this. And since we're in a position that where the city is counting, you know, basically every penny, how do we make that up? I mean, do we repurpose equipment, furniture? What do we? How do we make up four million dollars?
So right now, that's not the budget that's coming to council for approval. That is, we're at thirty percent design. This is part of the open transparency of progressive design build is that we get early cost estimations. Right now, as we are at thirty percent design, we're holding large contingencies. Just as because of unknowns as some subcontractors and others come online and those designs get built out. And we get actual true costs. We expect that to go down.
You expect that to go down? How did how did it end up? How did you? How did it end up higher than? Was it just the way that you were trying to pencil within the constraints and that was as close to the thirty five million that you could get or? As you're looking down the road?
Yeah, no problem. It's looking at the items that we know now at thirty percent. Not all subs have been brought on. Not everything has been vetted out. So we're holding large contingency sums to cover those issues. Part of the phase one B is to validate those and bring those out. And that's when we'll bring at the end of phase one B, the GMP or the guaranteed maximum price will be established. And that's when we'll know the entire cost of the project.
Okay, well, you know, I don't want to make more life more complicated or stressful for you than it already is. But if we can't rein it in tight to thirty five million. At least one council member may become a little bit unhinged. So that raised a flag for me. Also, on the lead versions three, just for council's peace of mind. When you come back and update this, could we see what those boxes are that you're checking off for that that silver? Lead silver version four, three, three for us? So that we know what those items are in lead certification that we would be checking off if we were going for lead certification? Would that be okay?
We can look into that, yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is that if we could get some more money into the art, because seventy thousand dollars is going to be a real tight squeeze and I would love a big not a huge, but you know, some outside art that just, you know, was a nice amendment and drawing attention to the public eye to the fire station. I don't know if it's indoor or outdoor, but if we have a chance to pad that, that would be awesome. So I think that's the sum total of my questions, comments. Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough.
All right, I just have one question. Given the crisis that we're in right now with the epidemic for Corbin, I want to know, is the air quality in these buildings something that can maintain a safe and healthy environment?
Yes, that is what we're looking at. And that's part of the energy code standards is the mechanical systems of two thousand eighteen. So there will be fresh outside air. That's the part of the system that Zubin was previously talking about. It'll have dedicated outside air with heating and cooling ability separated from the outside air.
All right, Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, during all the questioning, it came to mind, we were talking about the expansion of the fire department. We were talking about these stations lasting twenty years, maybe forty years, maybe even longer. Where are we going to put the personnel? Because in the past thirty years, the amount of personnel in those stations has doubled. Have we taken that into consideration at all?
Yes, prior to starting this project, there was a pre-bond study done that evaluated the twenty to thirty year life expectancy and we are building to the thirty year expectancy. For design.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. It looks like we've got five bays and two auxiliary bays and on forty two compared to four bays and forty five. How much future capacity are we building for? Like, do we need? Do we need all of those spaces? And do we expect to need all of those spaces?
Yes, we need all of those spaces for the current reserve app that we have for the reserve stations, both at forty two and at forty five. There is a possibility of at forty five additional equipment being purchased for forty five.
So there is some future capacity built in in terms of equipment here?
With the reason, yes, with the reserve apps and.
Okay. You know, I I share some of Councilmember Doer's concerns about, you know, seeing costs rising in an environment where we're seeing construction costs fall for almost everything else that we're talking about. You know, I I know that you've you mentioned like you're trying to be conservative with all of this, like, what are the chances that construction costs decline to the point where it makes up this four million ish dollar gap that we have?
We'll be tracking that. Presto, can you?
Sure. Well, I think I'll think about I'll be happy, right? If construction costs go down. So just to clarify, the goal at the end of phase one B, when we get to sixty percent design and reach the guaranteed maximum price. The goal absolutely is to be below the thirty five point five million that were passed in the bond. So we will not stay at the current estimated budget that is above the bond amount. And the fact that most likely construction costs will go down is certainly going to help us in this next cycle of estimating when we get to sixty percent design.
Got it. Thank you. I had another question. I'm having a little trouble understanding how lead version three to lead version four added a million and a half dollars in project costs. Can you explain kind of what some of those differences were and why that difference is so large?
Yeah, Noah or Zubin, would you mind?
I'm actually going to hand that off to Zubin and we can talk about some specifics. Zubin, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yeah. So so in general, you know, lead lead version four is is just much more difficult across the board and across kind of a number of different credit categories. So there are a lot of categories where, you know, multiple credits were combined into one credit. So what used to be worth three points might now be worth one point. There's also been a pretty big change in the way different credits are weighted. So you used to be able to capture a lot more credits under the location and transportation category, especially for station forty two, we would have achieved almost all the points under location and transportation. But again, that has become much more stringent. So even though we have regular bus service, it's not high quality enough, you know, for for lead version four. So there are just a number of credits all across the board where the requirements have changed. And so and so really you end up in a place where because you've lost so many credits that we could have counted on before. You really have to start going to the place where you're sort of adding new systems to really achieve some of those high performance criteria. So it's kind of, it's not just incremental, like add a little bit of insulation. It's kind of entirely new systems that you have to introduce to kind of make up for the points you would have achieved previously.
Is three point O silver roughly analogous to four point O bronze? Is that even a comparison I can make?
Yeah. So what are what are sustainability folks usually say? They've looked at this across a number of projects and it's it's obviously very different from project to project, but generally in the new version, you are one to one and a half steps lower than you would have been in the old version.
Got it. Of the cost savings of that million and a half dollars, how much of that is the actual certification and how much of that is the actual things that you have to do? If we went for lead bronze, how much of that one point four million dollars would be eaten up?
So certification costs are generally quite minor. I think, Noah, you might know the numbers off off the top of your head. So, you know, I think they were the actual certification costs were five, ten grand or something. There are a lot of, there are a lot of soft costs involved in filling out the documentation, you know, for the design team. However, you know, all us and all of our consultants are kind of designing that way anyway. So there's really not, there's not additional cost in the design itself, but there is a little bit of documentation cost.
But overall, the if we were to go for lead bronze instead of something similar to the old silver, the cost would be roughly similar?
I think that'd be something we would need to dig into and evaluate in further detail. Right now, we were just comparing silver to silver.
I'd also like to say, I think it was Councilmember Zorn's mentioned something about more specifics on exactly like what we would be giving up. Because there's some things for a fire station, like regular bus service or bike infrastructure that aren't super important to me about a fire station. Like, I'm assuming the guys aren't going to pick up their bikes to go on calls at any point in time. So like, I'd I'd be very interested in knowing kind of what we're giving up by moving away from that lead silver and like take those on more of a line item basis. Obviously, that's not something we'd be able to do tonight. That would be something that we'd have to handle the next time you guys come see us. Another question, I'm assuming there's going to be air conditioning in the buildings as well. Is you mentioned gas heat? Can you talk to me about the decision to go with gas heat as opposed to?
Zubin or Noah?
Yeah, I think, you know, the the gas fired heating in the in the app base is is kind of the most economical system for those large volumes and also has very fast kind of recovery rate for when the doors go up and those spaces get colder. The system for the occupied portion of the station is, you know, is a refrigerant heat pump type system. So that's that would be all electrically powered.
All right. So the occupied would be a heat pump as it is right now and it's just gas fired for the for the bays?
Exactly. And we're looking at a water heater heat pump system as well. So even the water heater would be a.
When you say economical, do you mean upfront costs or do you mean ongoing costs?
I think I think both, but that that kind of obviously depends on where gas prices go. So but I think it is, I think it's a little bit more economical upfront, but operating to, you know, it's much more efficient than the simple electric gradient. but I think it is, I think it's a little bit more economical upfront, but uh operating too. Um you know, it's much more efficient than the simple electric gradient.
You know, if we were to give up lead certification, which is something that, I mean, we have in our code for a reason. If we were able to go all electric on the whole building, um I'd be a lot more comfortable with that. Um I, I mean, the you know, we have a pretty clean and inexpensive electricity grid here in Washington. And I'm very interested in building electrification in general. Um but over the long term, I would expect those costs to go down as electricity continues to get cheaper. And as you mentioned, with gas prices, we're we're not sure. I mean, is that a an assumption you would make that over the long term, um over a twenty, thirty-year lifecycle, that electricity would be more economical?
Um I guess, you know, I I wouldn't say I have the expertise to speculate. There are definitely a lot of other good reasons to go with electrification, right? Um for climate change reasons, certainly. So I think, you know, that's something, um you know, Jeff, if that's something we want to study, um we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, I'd um I'd be much more comfortable with giving something up with lead if I knew we were helping make this building be more climate resilient as time goes on. And I'd also be interested in that bronze um categorization as well, um because I do, like Councilmember Doer said, um I do think there's value in the cachet of being lead certified. Obviously, we're going to end up staying below thirty-five. Given with what's going on with construction costs, um what do we lose if we wait and we punt this decision on lead until we have a little bit more information about what the project costs look like?
Right now, uh there's no impact to the phase one B um project. Or I may be mistaken. Noah?
Yeah, yeah, I I think that a couple of things we look at is that, one, for this phase one B, we are looking to get to a GMP so we can lock in that risk for you, for the city, uh and and make sure we keep that GMP at the thirty-five, five or under. Uh there is that balance that we're all going to walk here in the next number of months of continuing to purchase parts and pieces and then scopes of work for the project, try to lock those down. But also at the same time, trying to right uh right time the purchasing of certain trades to try to maximize our aim for our buck, really. Uh I think we're all looking for that from the market. But we're still, right now, is just still a lot of uncertainty out there. The prices, the projects we have out on the street. Uh we're still just seeing a little bit of just fluctuation, but we're not seeing these big, I don't say big, but larger cost savings. But that's ultimately the goal. The balance, though, of that whole thing is obviously schedule and just overall out and out, hey, when can we get a firefighter in a new station? In a new facility, in a new bunk room, uh helping our community. And so right now, yeah, as I think Krista and Jeff had mentioned, we have you know, been able to really reduce the overall project schedule, which is great because that obviously reduces overhead and other costs that just aren't going necessarily directly to construction costs. But we've got to find that balance of getting it in time and also just maximizing that dollar. So it's a little bit of a dance. We're going to be working continually with Aaron and Jeff and Krista and others to just find that that timing, really.
Yeah. If um if like basically timing and like figuring out like when exactly to buy something is the only downside of waiting. I mean, I'm inclined to try to push this decision off because we just don't have the best information yet. And like, are you coming to see us again in like before the end of phase one B, I guess, would be a better question? Like, is there a time where you're going to be here already where we could take this decision back up?
Uh no, there would not be another time that we'd see you between now and phase, the end of phase one B at the GMP of or phase two.
Got it. Um and maybe this would be a good better question for the city manager. Is this something that we could look at making a decision on in a certain number of months after we have a better handle on what construction costs look like without without having them come back?
I think that's, I think that's a little challenging. Staff usually brings the items at the times that they need them. So I'd have to ask Director Lenhart if she feels that there's some opportunity to have a conversation and and come back with some more information. It it's also up to a majority of council. Whether this is meeting your expectations to move forward. So I I don't have a specific answer on on how how we would come back, when we would come back and what the timing would look like on that. I don't know, Aaron, if you have some some thoughts?
Thank you, City Manager. I think part of the conversation as well, Councilmember and all council, is that um we are, as we work through this project, there are a list of additions, add alternate items that the fire department would like to see in these buildings as well. Things that help them function better or provide more training opportunity for them. So I think that that is one thing that we're trying during this phase one B is to ensure that the the program is as robust as possible for the folks who will be in those stations. So I I think that's why we're recommending that the um any lead certification be in addition to that and be funded by some other funding aside from the bond funds. Because as you see, we already need to, we need to squish it down a bit from where we are right now. But also, like I said, there's additional program that isn't currently included in this uh base cost. So um I think we could bring some items back to you. We can see what um a a lower level of lead certification might look like. One of the things that we were struggling with, frankly, when we were looking through the version four of lead silver is a a lot of the things that we would have to do would be added systems. So introducing solar and other things and reuse water and things like that, that when implemented in other stations in order to meet lead silver in uh version four, were very problematic for maintenance and for the long-term durability of these buildings. So that is a a very strong concern for us because anything we put in these buildings, we need it to last and we need to be able to maintain it with you know, staff we have who are very talented, but they don't necessarily have the knowledge base associated with these very different systems that may not really be worth the the community's money, really, in in my opinion.
Biggest things that I'm concerned with with lead is um climate resiliency, um but also long-term efficiency. There's probably get sick of hearing me talk about, you know, long-term costs being more of a priority than short-term costs. I want to just make sure that we're not trying to fit something in a very tight budget and we're going to end up costing ourselves a lot more over the long term. I'd be a lot more comfortable voting for this if I knew kind of what it is that we were giving up and what we weren't. And if without that, it's it's really difficult for me to give this up at this stage in the project.
I understand. And one of the things that um you'll come to know about me as we go through the capital facilities plan process is that the long-term lifecycle costs of all of our infrastructure is a huge focal point for me. Um and we, whenever we look at adding anything new, we always look at what it's going to cost to take care of it forever from its useful life. So I I I fully agree with you and I appreciate that perspective. And um yeah, we'll we'll look and see what what it would take to get us there. And I think we've already done some of those lists about some of those additional systems that would have been associated with version four.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um as we started to talk about the GMP, um I wanted to raise the question about what the GMP means guaranteed max price, correct? Um and so I wanted to understand contractually when um we say that that removes the liability from the city, which is a great thing for cost overruns. I also want to understand how that affects as far as the contractor bidding. So if they know they are taking on all the risk, what does that mean to the pricing?
I can jump in there. I'm not quite sure I understand your question. If you could rephrase?
So a typical cost plus contract, um contractor will bid it. He's got all the contract subcontract agreements. He does a cost plus, he's guaranteed a certain amount of money uh on top. When we do a guaranteed max price, and I'm just confirming, I'm not saying this is how it is, I'm just confirming. When we do commercial buildings guaranteed max price, it's not, it's not cost plus. So they've got to put some securities in there. Uh my question is typically, what is that security on a guaranteed max price contract? What do we typically see on those? This is a prevailing wage job, I'm assuming. So it'd be a little bit different than what I'm used to seeing uh in the residential world. I'm just asking so that I can kind of understand. If you have a two million dollar, thirty-five million dollar contract, it's guaranteed max, typically there's going to be some amount that they put in there for a contingency, basically. What what do you typically see on that?
It really depends on when we set those GMPs uh here, where we're talking about sixty percent design for the permanent facilities and really a hundred percent design for the interim uh and kind of the enabling work. I think at this point, we're we're looking at, we're having conversations in the team with Jeff and Aaron and Krista and Zubin about really still caring about a five percent design contingency because there's obviously still design detailing and and just um, you know, finishes to to fin- figure out. Uh there's still escalation we'll be carrying in there, some market escalation, because we don't have, we will not have everything purchased at that point in time. Uh so there will be some of those, you know, longer items out there as far as, let's say, finishes and maybe paving and some of the site work and things like that. And then there still is an owner contingency as well that we're carrying, not B and B carrying, but the team is carrying uh for those risk items outside of that. And so there are really still uh and then there's still a course of construction contingency, which is included as well. So we really have four methodologies within that GMP or really the project budget to make sure that not only B and B, the design team, uh architect, our engineers, things like that, but also the owner, or, you know, obviously you all have that flexibility to make sure that we're getting this thing done.
Okay, and getting it done uh in on budget, right?
On budget, yep.
Ensuring that we're low enough to where that that thirty-five million can can come in taxpayers voted for. So the final question I have, there was a lot of conversation around lead. Uh and from from what I know of lead, um we want to do lead, but no one's forcing us to do it. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Um so and and we've decided to do a lead building. And if we wanted to do the things that go into lead certification, there's nothing stopping us from that, right? We we could do all or none of the lead certification items, even if we were going for certification, correct? Let me, let me rephrase that. If if the, if under lead silver, um lead three silver were required to put in a specific type of heating system, if we didn't go for lead certification, we could still do that type of a heating system.
Correct, yes.
Correct. Okay. Um so when we look at options, the things that we want to do, we may not get the exact certification that we want, but we can still do things that are fiscally responsible for long-term maintenance and operation, correct? Well, it sounds like you guys are already looking at that. I'm just trying to confirm that we are. Um and one of the things Councilmember Thompson brought up was electricity. And from what I know, there's, there's a cost associated with doing electricity now versus into the future. And the cost of doing it now may be more, the cost to operate it may be more, but in the future it could change. But along those lines, solar can also come into play where it's part of the rough end of the building, but it's not installed. These are things that that I just know from being in residential, that a lot of the projects that I work on, we include the rough end of that projecting the future. And that's kind of what I was saying, planning for the future. Um and it sounds like you guys are doing those things, but if we could just ensure you continue to do those things and are looking at those opportunities that we can have for the future, it would be fantastic. And and I applaud you. I think you guys are on the right track. Um I know the hard work that you guys are doing to put these this budget together. Um I look forward to seeing it be under thirty-five million, far enough to where we save our community money and give them the the most, the best possible project that we can for the dollars that they're spending. That will be able to maintain and operate for years into the future. So thank you.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to express my interest also in looking at what it would take to get a lead four point O bronze. I want to also uh talk to, I appreciate uh Councilmember Zorn's uh request for a list. I agree with Councilmember Thompson. There are some things, and I don't know, I mean, I I think the way lead's broken down, it certain buildings have certain requirements, so that I don't know if there are requirements around bike infrastructure and that sort of thing within a uh fire station, but obviously there are some things that make less sense. Uh I agree with Councilmember McNeil. In Seattle, I know that you're required to basically keep a uh provide a future space for solar photovoltaics. I think that makes a lot of sense that we would provide that sort of space for future possible use of um solar. And then I wanted to bring up, I don't really understand why we're heating um the bays anyway. I don't heat my garage. I don't know why, I don't understand why we need to heat um fire truck um housing. That that doesn't make sense to me. And I just wonder, is that something we could just get rid of? It's not like it gets super cold in Washington. So that's a question I have.
So the fire apparatus does have a minimum temperature that you don't want to have it stored below.
The trucks?
Yeah, the trucks, the engines, the trucks, the fire engines, ladder trucks, you name. They do have water in them. They don't drain them out completely.
Okay.
So when they are in the bay, it's to keep them ready and available for immediate service. And that's the reason for the the heating. And it's really just to keep it at a minimum temperature uh to keep the the units from freezing.
That's really good to know. I didn't know that prior to this, so I appreciate that. And then, you know, I have the lead four point O list out here and I I'm just I think at minimum, we should be meeting all of the prerequisites. And then obviously, things like indoor air quality, that should be huge for a fire department. Uh I assume we're already looking at water use reduction and metering and commissioning, we've already talked about. And things like um construction and demolition waste management planning. I know, um you know, those things are important. So yeah, I would be super interested in seeing a list of what we're what we're looking at. And also you know, if it's not too much trouble, what the potential lifecycle cost savings is by implementing those. That would be really helpful. So uh thanks again.
All right. Lots of great questions answered, most of mine. Uh but I I really appreciate the questions around the lead documentation. I'd be curious in in how much that documentation process is. Uh on some of the projects I've worked on, it has been a sizable effort. So I would be curious to see what that would uh cost against the budget for the the bronze and and lead for. Because it it is, I mean, if you're going through all those troubles, it's good to have that acknowledgement and to you know, celebrate what you're doing. And as other council members said, you know, be being an example for what other building should strive for using the the best building techniques and being responsible with the environment. So I think a number of council members also spoke about the durability and maintenance of the buildings. I think Aaron and her team has really beat it into us over the couple of years that I've been on this, that how important that is. And I mean, I I believe it regardless, that we should take care of what you have. It's cheaper to take care of it and spend a little bit extra for a little longer. A little lower maintenance. But also, you know, when we were going out for this public safety levy, you know, some of the people are asking, it's like, oh, my house is only thirty years old. It's like, well, you don't have a army of guys living and working at twenty-four, seven. I mean, there's so much more going on in it. These buildings have like triple the use that so many of these other buildings have. So I think we really want them to be more utilitarian and durable in there. So so yeah, looking for the longevity of the the building and the systems, I think, is is always important with with our systems and the designs. But I mean, it's this is why we hired you and you guys have the expertise and and I really trust that you guys are already in looking into this. I think we're just reinforcing the the decisions and the path that you're making. So it makes you feel like, yes, we're we're doing the right things. People realize it. So yeah, so all right. Anyone, so we have a couple options here that we're looking to give the city manager authorization to do here. So Councilmember Doer. Still on mute. Where's that?
There's such a process here. So I moved to authorize the city manager to amend the progressive design build agreement with BN Builders/Miller Hall Partnership per exhibit F1 in the amount not to exceed $2,140,891 plus applicable Washington State sales tax. And approve a percent for the arts in the amount of $70,000. I'm going to withhold from item number two in this, in this motion.
Councilmember Ragno.
I'll second it per question.
Any discussion on that? All right, I'm not seeing any discussion. All right, Councilmember Ragno.
By us withholding the Second Amendment to meet the LEED V-3 Silver without obtaining LEED certification, is that going to impact going to Phase 3?
Stefan isn't allowed to discuss during motions.
Oh, all right, you're asking something that's probably beyond.
That's what I was afraid of.
Can I speak to my motion?
Please do.
Uh, I didn't, I didn't add to the second part to my motion because we have outstanding discussions around pursuing Bronze LEED and asking for lists. So I think we could have maybe another discussion, but I wanted to at least pass what I know we're all agreeing on.
All right, seeing no further discussion. Councilmember, or Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have the yellow card, so I stuck up a book. I, I'm unsure of why we're not including number two because it's, it's silver without obtaining LEED certification. So I won't be supporting this motion, but hopefully we can move forward.
Councilmember Ragno.
I too won't be supporting the motion. I, I think we can get there. I, I think the design has, has a number of issues, there's no question about that. You know, I, I'm worrying about a number of things with it, but I think we need to start moving forward. I think we need to start trusting some of the people that we have in the positions that we have them in. They're there for a reason, so I, I won't be supporting the motion.
All right, Deputy Mayor Zorn.
I appreciate the intention of being aggressive with the LEED certification. But I think that we can approve the second item here without, and still come back and amend and get more follow-up on more LEED certification details. So I'm not sure that I want to support this as it is right now either. If we're going to be slowing down the process of making these fire stations happen. I need clarification on it.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And I would not want to support this as, as proposed by Councilmember Doer because I believe that from what I heard from the staff, that this is their recommendation. I have confidence in the staff, and I believe that we should do the full recommendation.
Councilmember Doer.
I'd like to make an amending motion that we require staff and consultants to come back with an assessment of what it would take to look at Bronze 4.0 versus LEED 3.0 Silver, so that we can make an assessment. I, I think everybody's mentioned the cachet that comes with having a certified building, and yet there's no teeth if we approve this the way it is. So my amending motion would be one and three, and to make number two, ask, ask consultants to come back with a comparison with the Bronze LEED 4.0 list versus LEED 3.0 Silver list and what those look like.
Councilmember Ragno.
Uh, no, sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember McNeil.
I'm sorry, I put my thing up too soon, sorry.
Oh, Deputy Mayor Zorn.
I second that.
All right, so we have an amendment by Deputy Mayor, or by Councilmember Doer, and a second by Deputy Mayor Zorn for a review of Silver LEED under Version 4 versus Bronze LEED under Version 4. Or I might have mixed up.
I believe the amending motion was to direct staff to bring back a comparison of Silver LEED 3 as it existed at the time the resolution was passed in 2009 versus the current LEED Bronze Level 4. Is that correct, Councilmember Doer?
All right, any discussion on this? Councilmember Thompson.
The only thing I would add, and I, I don't know exactly how it is appropriate to do this, but a number of us mentioned that we'd like to see kind of a list of what some of those qualifications were. And that was mentioned earlier, but not in this specific motion.
I actually did. I asked for a list of both, like listed comparison of both.
Okay, perfect.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Ragno.
Can I ask a question of the city attorney?
Yes. It's a clarifying question of the motion.
It is. Do we have a BMC that we put in around 2009 that said any building over 1,000 square feet, we're going to go with Silver LEED minimum?
I believe it was a resolution, not a part of the Gotham Municipal Code. But yes, there was a resolution that was passed by council that any building greater than 1,000 square feet would be built to the LEED standards of Silver 3, LEED Silver 3 at the time that the resolution was passed.
So could we ask for Bronze now instead?
You could, that would be, yeah, you could. I have to think about how we would go about doing that. I mean, you would have, I would have to make it part of the amending motion. But I don't, but are you asking whether it'd be Bronze Level 3 now or Bronze Level 3 at the time that the resolution was passed?
Well, at the time the resolution was passed, it was Silver Level 3. So I mean, if we're going to Bronze, we're going downgrading considerably. And I'm not sure, I mean, everybody's asking about, give me checkpoints on to what's this and what's that. We don't know what we're going to be missing and what we're going to be gaining.
That's the whole point of the motion. That's the entire point of the motion, is to understand the differences and if they're equivalent.
Point of order, Mayor.
Understood. Yeah, please wait, wait to be spoken, or please wait to be acknowledged.
To that, I don't have enough technical knowledge between the difference of LEED Silver and Bronze at the time it was passed, to be able to, how I'm giving any guidance as to what an amending motion would be.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for the city attorney, can I make an amending motion on the amending motion?
You can make an amendment to the amendment, but this will be the last one. Any further amendments would be declined as a matter of being inconsistent with parliamentary procedure.
Thank you. I'd like to make an amending motion to the amending motion, which is to authorize the city manager as listed in our agenda.
So I'm not understanding that last one. City attorney, was that clear to you, what the?
No, I was actually going to write it down and the way I heard it, and then ask for clarification. Councilmember McNeil, can you repeat your motion first of all, and then I can ask clarifying questions?
Yes, I authorize this, I would like to recommend we authorize the city manager to amend the progressive design build agreement with BN Builders/Miller Hall Partnership per exhibit F1 in the amount not to exceed $2,140,891 plus applicable Washington State sales tax estimated to be $222,653 and approve interpretation of Resolution 1241, Section 5, to meet the intent of LEED Version 3 Silver without obtaining LEED certification and approve, three, approve percent for arts, for the arts in the amount of $70,000.
So to clarify, you're making an amendment so that the original suggested, let me find the exact language, the recommended, so that the original recommended action on the agenda bill would be what would be put forth, is that correct? Okay, so just for everybody, just for clarification, the original motion was to, and if we're looking at the agenda bill, there were three recommended actions. The original motion was for one and three to go forward. The amending motion by Councilmember Doer was for one and three to go forward, but that we would, staff would be directed to come back with a, essentially a checklist to illustrate the differences between LEED Silver 3 at the time that the resolution in 2009, please forgive me if the date is wrong, versus Bronze LEED Level 4. And then the amending motion to that is to accept Sections 1, 2, and 3 of the recommended action. Discuss.
Councilmember Ragno.
I second that amendment.
Any discussion on that? So city attorney, that, that seems in conflict with the original motion and the second, or and the amendment.
So the only thing that we have before you for the purposes of discussion is the amendment to the amendment that would, so the original one was one and three only, the second one was one and three with a caveat for two. This amendment would replace those two prior versions to include all three sections of the recommended action. So that is solely what is being discussed. If that amendment passes, then it amends the amendment. And then we would have to do a second vote to pass that amendment to the original action, which would seem unnecessary. If you were to pass the amendment to the amendment, it would seem that logic would dictate you would also pass the amendment. But where we are right now is just discussing the amendment to the amendment that incorporates all three recommended actions in the agenda bill.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
All right, I was tracking that, and then I'll just blew my brain out of the water. So the effect is with the second, with the Second Amendment to the First Amendment is that, that we, we stick with the text as it's written, correct?
Correct. That, I believe, is the amendment to the amendment presented by Councilmember McNeil.
So if we vote, if, so the next step is to vote on this, and so the.
Discussion and then vote.
Right, we have a discussion on it and then vote. And so the First Amendment.
It's in limbo right now. It's in limbo right now. Only thing we are discussing is the amendment to the, if, whether that passes or fails, that's when I will know how to correct council further. The only thing before you proceed is the amendment to the amendment that would incorporate all three recommended actions.
So if we do that, do we negate, I guess I'm confused. There was some background noise going on, so I was only able to catch part of what you were saying. So if we, if we vote in the affirmative of this, we still can come back and address that First Amendment that was made? Is that what you're saying?
No, because this Second Amendment will replace that First Amendment.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, that's what I thought was happening. All right. I, I, I can't support it because I would like to see that list. So thank you.
Councilmember Doer.
All I was trying to accomplish was to get what I knew we agreed on out of the way so we could have a conversation about LEED. I think it's important that if we're going to make the effort to get LEED, that we actually get certification and the plaque on the building, because I think we're supposed to be leaders and be an example. And that LEED certification matters. So I was just trying to find a way to potentially still achieve LEED certification. That's my only goal, I don't know. I, I guess I just figured if you didn't agree, you vote no against the amendment. That would have been cleaner, but nevertheless, here we are.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
We're still officially discussing, right? I don't want to speak out of turn. So if I'm understanding, Councilmember Doer is she wants the LEED certification, period. And that the items that would be checked off, that would be part of the certification are, I don't want to say incidental, but she needs, she really wants that LEED certification. Am I understanding you correctly?
Councilmember Doer.
So I, I would like to at least give us the opportunity to get the certification, but I also did ask for a comparative list between the two. So I'm not married to the certification, but I will, I don't want to close the door on getting the certification, getting the plaque, having those bragging rights and the cachet of having a LEED building. But I, the list is part of that too, the comparative list between Bronze and Silver of the different versions.
Councilmember McNeil.
Can I ask the city attorney a clarifying question? On item number two, approve interpretation of Resolution 1241.5 to meet the intent of LEED Version 3 Silver without obtaining LEED certification. Does that mean in any point of the process that we cannot go back to certification?
From my interpretation, it would not. So the, as, and anyone who was on the line, please jump in and correct me if I'm misspeaking. My understanding is that because of the interpretation, they were using that as city-directed guidance in how they were going to create these buildings and took that, the LEED certification in time, in effect, at the time of passage of that resolution as that guidance. Because the LEED Version 3 Silver no longer exists in the form it existed at the time of the passing, they, I believe they were simply looking for clarification that it was council's intent to accept. Because it's a little odd, frankly, to say this, we want to be the standards that were in place 10 years ago, 11 years ago. So, but that is what the resolution said, that it was very clear that they wanted to be the standards in existence at that time. So I think what they're looking for is guidance to say, do you, that that's the correct interpretation? And that would then further guide them. Council does have the ability to go away from that and make it gold, silver, bronze, whatever they want with a further, with further discussion or further action.
And by adopting that, we can, the city can still bring us back the list, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. So let me just try and be clear here, because so much conversation about this. If we go with the approval as presented to us for the number one, two, and three approval, we can still come back, is that what I'm hearing? And look at. And look at the lead section five of the intent of lead silver, whether it's silver, gold, whatever we want to do. We can come back and visit that. Is that correct?
That is how I'm interpreting it. I will say though, that because I do not have the technical expertise of building anything, I don't know what that would entail or what direction staff would give to the consultants. That that's a separate matter, and I don't know what the cost of that would be, what that it would entail, what delays that might cause. I just don't have that technical expertise. But yes, council will always have the ability to revise a contract, give revise their direction to staff, et cetera. But I just can't speak to what the impact would be on that.
All right, and just let me ask one other clarifying question. It looks like what what councilmember Dur wants, let me try to figure this out. Yeah, is the list, right? So we could still look at the list to make future decisions. It doesn't have to be in this.
That would be my interpretation. Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
I would just like to add, like, if we still want to look at the list and we still want to see some of the things that we're actually doing and have further conversations about it, I don't understand why we would take action on it tonight.
All right, my my final discussion point here will be, my understanding was that in order to reach the guaranteed maximum price in a timely manner, we want to give direction to the team so they can continue forward in their presence schedule. And they can bring us back the information. But they still have their schedule that they need to meet and we need to give that direction. So I'll be supporting this latest amendment to approve both one, two, and three. All right, city clerk.
Regarding the amendment to the amendment, please state yea or nay when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yea.
Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember Duer.
Nay.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Motion passes five two with councilmembers Thompson and Duer descending.
Okay, so as I'm, sorry, if I could jump in, so now we have.
Please do.
Okay, so now we have an underlying motion and an amendment. The amendment is to adopt what is in the agenda bill, all all items of one, two, and three. So if you vote yea on that, that will occur. If you vote nay on that, then it will revert back to the underlying motion, which is to adopt one and three and to give staff the direction to return with comparison of lead version three silver and lead version four bronze. That would, that would include the list to mash them up against each other. So, but you're, you are again discussing and voting on the amendment that includes all three to change the underlying motion that only had two with that direction for follow-up.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Could Paul repeat that one more time? Because I'm pretty sure I was tracking him, but I want to make sure that my vote is where it's where I want it to land. Could you just run through it one more time, please?
Absolutely. You have, you have an underlying motion from councilmember Duer that talked about item one and item three and gave specific direction regarding item two to come back to compare lead version three silver and lead version four bronze. That's the underlying motion, but there's an amendment to that motion. That that amendment would essentially, it's the same on points one and three. The only difference is that the amendment would follow the recommended action as presented in the agenda bill. And if you if you vote yes on that, that would occur. If you voted no, then we'd revert back to the underlying motion. And the underlying motion was one and three with direction to return on item two.
Councilmember Thompson.
Can we just withdraw all of these motions and somebody make a new motion for simplicity's sake?
I think we've kind of gone too far down the rabbit hole for that to occur at this point.
Seeing no further discussion, city clerk.
I'm not even going to try to repeat that, so I'm just going to call names. Deputy Mayor Zornz, please vote yea or nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Thompson, yea or nay?
I still don't understand which means which.
You are, if you.
What would be the most consistent with my last vote?
I can't do that for you. If you, if you vote, if you vote yea, you are voting to approve all three. If you vote nay, you are voting to approve one and three with direction for staff to return on item two.
All right, so nay is I would like to see staff to return on item two.
That is, that's correct.
Right, nay.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yea.
Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember Duer.
Nay.
Yea.
Okay, so we are now back to the underlying motion.
Passes.
Sorry.
Sorry. Passes four, three.
Okay, so we're now returning to the underlying motion, which has now been amended twice. And so the underlying motion is to follow the recommended action as it appears in the agenda bill. So discuss and vote.
Okay, so I'm going to call your name for the underlying.
Not seeing any discussion. All right, city clerk.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
This is just voting on the recommended action, yea or nay, correct? Then I'll go nay.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yea.
Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember Duer.
Nay.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Was that a yea or nay?
It was definitely yea.
Okay, sorry. It passes five two.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I'd like to speak to my vote. I voted yes for expediency to get this, keep this moving. But I don't think that, and we can talk about this later, but I don't think that we're, it's a big deal to ask for a comparative list of what's happening on the lead certification items. So I will be asking for those later if someone else doesn't beat me to the punch on that.
Understood. All right. So let's see what time we're at. So what's the? Yeah. All right, so we have AB 20 dash zero eight eight professional services agreement supplement number 1757 dash three with OAC Services for project construction management services for the replacement of fire stations forty-two and forty-five. Oh, there it is, fifteen minutes. Straightforward. I'm not sure who to call on to present this. Is this you again, Jeff?
Yes, it is. I'm.
All right.
We're working out getting. All right, good evening again. I'm joined tonight with Crystal Lutz from OAC Services as a project manager. I'm here tonight for approval of professional services agreement supplement three with OAC Services. OAC Services was selected by the city to provide project and construction management services for the fire station rebuild projects. In November of 2018, voters passed save and secure bond for replacement. Through a thorough process, OAC Services was selected by the city to provide project and construction management services for the fire station rebuild project. We chose to have this contract in three phases. Phase one consisted of project startup and delivery method selection. OAC Services provided the city with several options of delivery method. Through the workshop, the city project team evaluated and determined that progressive design build is the best fit for the project. OAC assisted the city team for application to use progressive design build as delivery method with the state capital projects advisory review board and received approval in June of 2019. Phase two consisted of design builder selection and procurement, project management of phase one A of design builder contract, evaluation of twenty interim sites, development and a review of thirty percent design and permanent stations. Phase three, which is the what we're here for, will be for project and construction management of phase one B and construction phase two of design builder contract, including project closeout and warranty. Recommend that we enter into supplement agreement, phase three services with OAC Services in the amount not to exceed $1,132,878 to provide project and construction management services from July 2020 through September 2023. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right, anyone have any questions? All right, seeing no questions, then I'll need a motion. Councilmember Agnew.
I move the recommended action.
Second.
Councilmember McAuliffe, please use your card so I can call on you. Thank you. So we have a motion by councilmember Agnew, second by councilmember McAuliffe to authorize the city manager into, to enter into a supplemental agreement number seventeen fifty-seven dash three, phase three services with OAC Services Inc. in the amount not to exceed $1,132,878 for fire station project construction management services, July 2020 through September 2023. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, city clerk.
Say yea or nay when I state your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yea.
Mayor Olson. Councilmember Duer.
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thanks to everyone. So let's take a five-minute break and we'll have visitor comment when we come back at seven fifty.
All right, welcome back to the city council meeting. Uh, we are up next with visitor comment.
Yes, uh, Mayor Olson, we have two visitor comments. Uh, Sarah Gustafson, are you on the line? Sarah, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Great. You have three minutes. And your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Gustafson, and I live in Bothell, Norway Hill. I'm calling about budget priorities. First, I'd like to acknowledge the immense efforts of city manager Jennifer Phillips and her staff for steering our budget shift through the COVID storm. Now, in today's agenda, police body cameras are one budget priority. In last week's workshop, Steve Superlich said that body cameras would cost four hundred fifty thousand dollars to set up. Plus, ongoing costs of two hundred thousand dollars to two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Those costs are high, and cities across the country have realized that body cameras are not the answer to policing questions. Sadly, as we've seen elsewhere, cameras can bear witness that they cannot uproot racism. So what actions do people in our city want? To learn more, this past weekend, I joined the Black Lives Matter March in Canyon Park. And fear thanks to the organizers, Bothell resident Savannah Jackson and her friends and family. At this rally, six local people from different backgrounds spoke to educate and inspire us. There were no demands for body cameras there. Instead, here are some of their calls for change. Easily accessible data from the police department. To redirect funds from policing to homelessness and domestic violence center. For us all to look deeply at the past, understand how the historical roots of policing in the U.S. are intertwined with slavery. To examine the Bothell Historical Museum and its treatment of the history of indigenous people. To hire and appoint more people of color in the city, and to create a racial equity council for the city. Now, that listing is incomplete, and it's filtered through my own biases. So I encourage you to speak out leaders like Ms. Savannah Jackson and get the full story. They're on social media, Facebook, Bothell Community Page. Their proposals could cost less than body cameras. At the same time, their calls are more challenging and create greater room for growth as a city. That's why we should listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Levitin. Are you there, David?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, I'm originally Bothell in the Norway Hill area, and first I'd like to thank the whole city council and the city staff for working so hard on the city budget. Also, thank you to, uh, Robin for making sure the public comment could be helped despite some of the minor issues we had. My comment today is about the police department's request for body cameras, one of the identified priority budget items listed in today's agenda. When I first began looking into body cameras, I thought that'd be supporting their introduction. After all, who doesn't want more transparency for the police? But after digging into the fact, I came to realize that body cameras are not as beneficial as I thought, and the current financial situation, I would oppose their purchase. Body cameras were initially hailed as a way to provide an unbiased view of police actions from the point of view of the officers, so there would be a record of any misconduct. However, there's a fatal flaw to these arguments, the actions of the officers and the coach of the department. Body cameras do not store video at all times. After all, we don't need or want to see police officers getting their lunch. Hence, the acquisition of the cameras represents a policy, the same policy that also governs police use of force and other interactions that have caused too many protests we see now. In too many publicized cases, body camera footage is not available due to malfunctions of the camera, officer not turning on the camera, or departmental policies blocking the release of footage. In fact, one of the only cases I could find where a police officer was convicted based largely on the body camera footage was in Baltimore, where from what I understand, an officer planted some evidence, turned on their camera, and then found the evidence. He would have gone away with this, except that he didn't know the camera also stored the previous 30 seconds upon activation. Just like every other policy, good officers will use body cameras correctly, while the bad actors won't. Despite my best efforts, I could not find any policy that had been shown to mitigate these concerns. But what is clear is that body cameras are not solution to the concerns that have been raised about the police departments. What I have learned is that body cameras are helpful in protecting a protective group, the police. Since Germany have deployed body cameras as a way to protect the police officers from false accusations, not for transparency. Last year, I would have thought this is a good idea, but given the current financial and social environment, a large purchase benefiting primarily police is not appropriate. Lastly, body cameras are expensive. Beyond the initial cost of the equipment, there are costs for video storage, processing of that video, and records requests. The council is not saying up for a one-time purchase. So long as the cameras are being used, there will be high costs. I would hope the city council considers that this enlies their goal for financial stability. Given our current financial crisis and the lack of strong evidence supporting the use of body cameras, I encourage the city council not to approve the purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our visitor.
All right, thank you. On to A B twenty dash zero eight nine, consideration of ILA with North Shore Parks and Recreational Service, the NPRSA for City of Bothell to provide administrative services. Uh, so tonight we have Carly Jorgensen to present and entertain our questions.
Okay, uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Carly Jurger, and I am your levy coordinator. Uh, can I just get a thumbs up that y'all can hear me and see my PowerPoint? Okay? All right. Thanks. Um, so tonight I'm presenting an item to you that asks the council to consider entering into an interlocal agreement between the city and the North Shore Parks and Recreation Service area. Uh, should you choose to enter into this agreement, the city would then provide staff and services um, needed to support the, uh, NPRSA board in implementing their voter-approved levy funding for repairs to the building um, that's leased to the North Shore Senior Center. Uh, this is an item that, uh, city council previously directed staff to prepare. Um, and tonight, the policy question before you is to consider whether or not council is interested in allocating existing resources and hiring additional personnel to provide services to the NPRSA, which would be fully funded by the NPRSA. So this last piece means that the city's allocation of resources to the NPRSA is, um, intended to be budget neutral. Uh, before walking through a few of the components of the agreement, I'll just provide, um, some context for uh, our listening audience about the NPRSA itself and, uh, also how we got here tonight. So for those, um, who are unfamiliar, the NPRSA is a quasi-municipal organization that, um, was founded in nineteen eighty-eight with the primary purpose of purchasing a plot of land and building a building that we all, um, have come to know as the North Shore Senior Center. So the NPRSA leases this building to the senior center. Uh, the NPRSA's member agencies include the cities of Bothell, Kenmore, and Woodinville, as well as the unincorporated, um, parts of King and Snohomish Counties. It is a taxing jurisdiction, and, and that jurisdiction follows around the same footprint as, uh, the North Shore School District. Uh, this agreement, uh, was sparked last fall when the NPRSA board put a levy on the ballot um, asking voters to consider, um, additional, uh, property tax for repairs to the North Shore, um, Parks and Recreation Service area building. So the, the levy is at four cents per thousand dollars of assessed value, um, which is around one point two million dollars per year, um, which will last until the end of, of twenty twenty-five when the levy expires. So in the November, um, election last year, voters approved, uh, this levy, and so the funding has now started to, uh, come in. Soon after the levy was approved, the board, um, realized that they needed, um, uh, some additional capacity in order to manage the, the new funding. So they sent a letter of interest to all of the member agencies to see if anyone was interested, um, in providing these services. Uh, soon after receiving the letter, um, Bothell City Council, uh, you all directed city manager Phillips to respond with interest and asked staff to begin, uh, negotiating an interlocal agreement. Uh, your assistant city manager and I started preparing this agreement, which we presented to the board at their, uh, at their June meeting just last month. Um, and I'm happy to say that the board approved the interlocal agreement, uh, which brings us to where we are tonight, now asking the council to consider entering into this agreement. Uh, so I'll give you an overview of a few components of, of the agreement. Uh, primarily accomplishes four things. First, it names Bothell the administering agency. And what this means, um, is that we are agreeing to provide the staff and services, um, to the board. Uh, and then the board agrees, uh, to fully reimburse the city for the costs associated with these, with the staff and services. Um, so whether you choose to enter into this agreement or not, the city, uh, would still retain the commitment it's already made to the NPRSA as a member agency. So becoming an administering agency is, uh, additional and separate to what we've already committed to as a member agency. Uh, second, the agreement outlines the duties of the NPRSA, um, and the administering agency. Uh, this relationship, um, mirrors the relationship that you have, um, as council with, with staff. So as, um, as council, like the board, you would have, um, or the board would have all the authority to make policy decisions. And then staff or us as the administering agency could bring items forward for consideration or prepare, um, analysis to support, uh, decision-making. Uh, third, it lists, um, terms of the agreement, such as how parties can make, um, amendments to the agreement, um, as well as terminate the agreement. So if, if any party is unsatisfied and, and consensus cannot be reached, then, um, anyone can terminate the agreement, uh, sixty, it would be effective sixty days after receiving notice. Uh, duration, so unless the agreement is terminated, uh, it would be in effect for the life of the voter-approved levy, which would last to the end of twenty twenty-five. And then lastly, uh, the agreement details the proposed, uh, cost and scope of services. So we are proposing, um, a suite of services that we feel are needed to effectively support the board. Um, and these, uh, these staff and services are outlined in your agenda bill. The total cost for these services for the remainder of twenty twenty totals a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. A bit, a bit more broadly, uh, over the next six years, the scope that we're proposing providing to the NPRSA board uh, focuses on general operations and administration of the NPRSA. Uh, and a majority of this work would be focused on, uh, project management for, um, a number of the capital repairs that are needed for the building. Additionally, um, we would focus on supporting the board in accomplishing their goal of good financial and asset management, especially now that additional funding is, is coming in. And as well as supporting them in making good policy decisions. So the way this would work, should you choose to enter into the agreement, um, is we would work with the NPRSA to prepare a work plan, um, part of which would include, um, a proposal for a level of resources and staffing needed to accomplish this work plan. And we understand with projects like these, sometimes they involve more or different resources upfront. And then those change or even taper off as, uh, the project progresses, um, as the years go by. So considering this, we built in some flexibility to the agreement where the levels of staff and, and services can be decided through, um, the, uh, NPRSA's annual budget process. Uh, then you would see those same staffing levels come through, uh, the City of Bothell's, uh, regular budget process since employees um, dedicated to the NPRSA would still be employees of the City of Bothell. Um, so with that, I'll also, again, just a reminder that, that this is intended to be budget neutral because, um, the NPRSA has already agreed to reimburse the city for the full cost. Uh, if council chooses to enter into this ILA, uh, staff's prepared to immediately get started with the board on work plan and, and beginning some repairs. But I'm here to answer any questions that you may have as you consider this action. Thank you.
All right, who would like to go first? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there's, there's been some work, Carly, that's already been done on creating a plan of how to move forward with the renovations. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Uh, yes, um, great memory, Councilmember McAuliffe. There was a, a consultant study that did, that, um, uh, examined the facilities and created a list of, of, um, items to consider. So that would be one of our first, um, steps, should the council choose to enter into the agreement, is to go through that report and, um, consider what needs to be done first and foremost, and also plan out the repairs according to the timing of, of the property tax revenue. So if you remember, those, uh, those dollars only come in twice a year. So cash flow becomes something to, to consider when planning, um, the renovations. So it would take, most likely would take the duration of, of the levy to, to finish the repairs.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, I'm sure one piece of this information that I'm going to ask you is buried here in the agenda packet, and I missed it, so I apologize. Uh, the, there's the projected, uh, the estimated administrative cost through twenty twenty-five. Uh, what does MP, NPRSA, um, cover those costs? It's an annual cost. Do they break it up quarterly? How does the city get reimbursed for those administrative costs?
Uh, great question, and in the agreement, we've put in, um, a line that the NPRSA would reimburse the city, uh, annually.
Annually.
Mm-hmm. So before we get started, and they would, they would reimburse us what they've agreed to for the, the portion of twenty twenty, which is that a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Perfect. Good. Okay, thank you. And then another question to ask you, because I think when we first talked about this, we weren't looking at we weren't looking at the impact of COVID and the amount that city staff had to be reduced and all that. And I know Jennifer's already been thinking about that. But can we still move forward and support NPRSA with this without hiring new staff? Can we do it on what we have left, I guess, is what my question is. I know our Assistant City Manager is shouldering a lot of this. But I just need a confirmation that we can do this based on what we still have staffed.
Well, so we have two positions we've identified that are in, actually three. So we have Carly's position, so she will transition from the levy coordinator for our levy to a levy coordinator for NPRSA. I believe it's 90%. I think we're trying to hang on a little bit to the talented young woman that we have and be able to use her for a few things on our levy still. And then for the first, for 2020, 50% of the Assistant City Manager, because it needs an executive director and needs that oversight as we build this relationship and build the work plan. We also have a portion of Deputy City Clerk, about 30% because of the records management oversight. And we need to have a clerk for, this is an executive board or board of directors, so we need a clerk to be able to manage, just like our city clerk does. That organization will need a clerk as well. But then we will have to hire a records assistant. The records are, they need some work. And so we have 28 years of records that we need to get in some reasonable order. And there is no, we don't have staff capacity to be able to do that. So one additional person will be hired. The individuals who were laid off will be notified first and they have first, if they're qualified, and there's language within the agreement with the union, they would be given the opportunity to apply for that position or obtain that position if they're qualified. I'm not sure of the specifics to it. And then if one of those, if none of those 14, then we can go out and hire someone. This is a limited term position because it is a limited term project. We hope within the year, or I think, Carly, we're thinking about a year, to dig through all those paper records, all the electronic records, and get a reasonable records management system going.
Okay, well, that's great that that's our first fallback is to go look at our people. Will NPRSA be paying for that position then?
Absolutely, they'll be paying for that position.
Okay, I wanted to confirm that. That's it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dewar?
I just wanted to say I'm fully in support of this agenda item. The senior center obviously is really, plays a big part in our community and even more so during COVID, where they've expanded their food pantry to the entire community, not just seniors. And so I'm really excited to be able to support them and provide administrative help. So that was all.
Anyone else? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a few steps back and talk about the process that we've had to go through to get to where we are today. It has taken an enormous amount of work and dedication by a ton of people. This is not just a Bothell senior center. This is a regional senior center. It happens to be in our backyard. I want to start by just saying, you know, when I first got on this committee four years ago, there was a ton of chaos, not knowing where we're going this way or that way. And we were able to steer that ship with the help of our city manager, who stepped in and helped guide us a little bit as far as running this board. Assistant City Manager Kelly came in and right behind and helped keep us on track. We had an intern come in and help design a logo and a website for the NPRSA. Amazing work. I just can't even begin to tell you, I mean, we talked about the paper chaos that's going on right now. There was no paperwork to be found or understanding how things were done in the past. Wes came in as an intern director, helped clean things up financially, making sure that checks are getting signed and done properly. And in the last meeting with the NPRSA, Carly and Wes and Kelly, the three of them, I can't even begin to thank you enough for the great work that you guys did and guiding this board into a fabulous place to be able to go from here forward. Liam, Mayor, thank you for your attendance. It's been huge to have you there, part of the committee, the board. Your voice is needed as much as possible there, especially now. Councilmember Agnew, you've served on that committee far longer than I have and you've seen it come, I don't want to speak for you, but I'm pretty sure you've seen it come a very long way into our community. You know, when we thought about putting a levy out for this senior center, you know, there's other senior centers in our area that they didn't fund and we see what's happened to them. We put it out, we were unsure, and our community spoke on how important this is. Councilmember Dewar spoke about how near and dear it is to her. I know her mom attends there and the wonderful work that they're doing. It's amazing to all of us. It's amazing to go there and see the things that they're doing within our community. And I just couldn't imagine it not being here. So, you know, the community spoke loud and clear. I think that this ILA, for me, as a council member, as a member of the NPRSA board, as just a resident of Bothell, I'm very proud. I'm very proud that Bothell stepped up. The other entities that were here weren't always at the table. They didn't always show up. But in the last meeting that we had, we had King County, Snohomish County, Woodinville, Bothell, and Kenmore, all on a virtual call. All of us working together with Carly, Wes, and Kelly guiding us. This is what we need to do to move forward. And I will tell you that we just got done talking about our fire stations and, you know, this building, 30, 28 years, I think the city manager just said 30 years, has been lacking maintenance. And it's costing us a ton more money to maintain this building and get it back up speed. This is the power of what we can do when we work together, when we talk through things. We've been talking about this for a long time. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who's put all the time and effort into this. I know the seniors are very proud of all the hard work that we've done and this thing will be in our future for generations to come. So I just wanted to say thank you. And this is just amazing, so.
All right. Well, you certainly said everything I was feeling because this is definitely a great organization. Thank you for your leadership on the board. I feel that Bothell had already, was already providing a lot of these services. So I think we were a natural fit to continue this and formalize the relationship that we have, especially since they're in our backyard. So I think this is great. It was sorely needed there and it's a great organization. It's, I think, in much better hands. I mean, it was just kind of in a free fall before, just neglected. So I think we're doing what we need to and it's on a good trajectory and they have a lot of work to do. So I'm thankful for the great staff that they'll have. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. If there's no other questions, Mr. Mayor, it would be an honor to actually move the recommended action to approve the interlocal agreement with NPRSA for the City of Bothell to provide administration services on behalf of the NPRSA.
Councilmember Agnew?
I second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember McNeil, a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any further discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk?
We say your name when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Yay.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yay.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yay.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yay.
Mayor Olson?
Yay.
Councilmember Dorr?
Yay.
Member Agnew?
Yay.
Pass is seven zero.
All right, great. Thanks, everyone. Now all the hard work starts. All right, on to AB 20-090, Consideration of Letter of Support for Economic Development Administration Grant Application.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I am here this evening to ask for your consideration in to support a $1 million grant application to the Economic Development Administration. So for the past several months, I've been collaborating with my economic development partners on the east side, with my partners in Rinton, Bellevue, Isakaw, Kirkland, and Redmond. And we've been working to create a program that would reskill our residents who have been hardest hit by COVID-19. Those would be workers in the retail, food service, and tourism sectors. We would provide them, we would be creating programs that would focus retraining on sectors in advanced manufacturing, healthcare, and technology. We've also too been working very closely with Cascadia College. I've been working with their dean of student learning to identify gaps and opportunities in our own community. So this is a $1 million grant for a three-year program. By signing this letter, it does not financially obligate the City of Bothell to the program, but there is a 20% match. So I have been reaching out to the largest employers and employers in our community and asking for their support. So with that, that's a very brief overview of the program. If I can provide you any more questions or details, I'm here to answer your questions.
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Oh my goodness, how timely. Wish that this grant was for more money because I know it's going to get gobbled up fast. So thank you, thank you. And please extend our thanks to the other cities that are part of this as well. My question is, is Lake Washington Technical College part of?
Yes, yes, that's correct. We've been collaborating with Cascadia College, Lake Washington Institute of Technology, Bellevue Community College, as well as a technical college down in Rinton.
Perfect. Okay. Will you keep us posted how this comes to fruition?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to applaud your work in joining together with the other cities and looking at retraining for all those employees that have to find other sources of income. So as our economy develops, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dewar?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is wonderful. This is exactly what we should be doing, putting our community, lifting it up in this time. I thank you for your work. It's exactly what we need to be doing. So thank you. And if there's anyone else who's going to speak, I'm happy to make a move.
All right, seeing no other questions, Councilmember Dewar?
I move the recommended.
Council, Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dewar to approve and support the City of Bellevue's and Startup 425's proposal to the U.S. Economic Development Administration Funding Opportunity Number PWEAA 2020, and a second by Deputy Mayor Zorn's. Any discussion? Right, seeing none. City Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Yay.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yay.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yay.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yay.
Mayor Olson?
Yay.
Councilmember Dorr?
Yay.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yay.
Pass is seven zero.
All right, great. So it looks like the next one is about an hour long. So let's take a five-minute break and come back at 8:30. Hot mic. Hot mic. All right, welcome back, everyone. So we are on to AB twenty dash zero nine one. Consideration of Council's 2021-2022 biennial goals and priorities for development of the 2021-2022 biennial budget. So over to City Manager Jennifer Phillips.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Just going to provide a very brief introduction to this item. This is really for the council's discussion and consideration. And what I provided for you this evening in the agenda bill is just a history of how we got where we are today. Council has been working on goals. The first set of goals that I worked on with the council was for 2017, 2018. So we've been working from that base. We modified, council modified those goals in 2019, 2020. That's the current year that we're working in. And so as part of the 2122 budget preparation process, we asked council to review those goals and also look at your priorities. And priorities are specifically because of the budget crisis that we're facing, not only in 2020, but also as we're preparing the 2122 budget. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a three-night session, almost 12 hours of workshop, budget workshop, to provide information with regards to our 2122 budget. And as part of that process was identifying priorities and from those priorities, creating and updating your 2122 goals. So what I provided based on the feedback that I heard, and I culminated your conversations and what I heard to be consensus on priorities, I provided a summary of that at the end of the workshop on the 25th, I believe it was, of June, at the very end, just saying, this is what I heard, looking for consensus. And I've added that, and that was the meat of this, or the general idea of this agenda bill, was to provide you that information for your further discussion and consideration. So in looking at your 2019-2020 goals, I worked with the mayor to pare those down a bit, to be a little broader rather than more specific, and to allow more things to fit under each of those goals, and then to report out on those goals, the strategic objectives that we're working on in 2122, as we go through those years, and how we're working towards accomplishing your goals. And so you'll see listed in the agenda, the agenda bill, there were five goals that were offered for your discussion and consideration. A focus on financial stability was a key strategy and areas of focus that the council had strong consensus on. Provide a safe and secure community, support the health and well-being of the community, maintain our infrastructure, and foster equitable prosperity for all. So I tried to capture in your conversations sort of these goals, and again, to put your priorities and strategic objectives under those. And the list on the third page, which is in your agenda bill, is basically the list of things that I heard, and that was the list that I reiterated at the end of the workshop. Two things were added. We didn't get feedback, but it was important for me to get feedback on these two items. They were brought up during the community development presentation by Director Kat Cotterman, and that was funding the downtown EIS. We've come to the point where the current EIS is getting to maximum capacity, and that is a benefit to developers and to continue the growth and the development that we've seen in the downtown. We just want to make sure that that's something that council would consider for 2122, so that we get feedback on that, as well as funding the long-range planning position. There are positions that are currently vacant, there are positions that we'll be looking at, and there were many needs that we talked about during the workshop. But this one in particular, because it relates directly to the docket, and you had provided feedback prior when you looked at and approved the 2019 docket, you had approved filling this position. As I've shared, we did do a recruitment. That recruitment did not culminate in a successful job offer. And so then COVID hit, and we decided to hold that position vacant until we could go through this budget discussion. So I just, I'm bringing that one to your attention because you had approved it, and currently it's not funded in the budget, and so we want to make sure that you understand that and that you give us feedback with regards to that position. Otherwise, I'm going to lean back, and I turn it over to the council for your discussion and, and direction to me.
I was on mute. Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. I, in large part, I agree with the goals that you put in the agenda. I asked, three of us got together before the agenda packet came out to talk about what we thought we had heard from the council and, and put together a list, which I believe you forwarded to everyone on council. So what I, what I don't see when I compare the lists are, we talked, we talked about helping our community respond and recover from COVID, the COVID crisis. To me, that's, to me and the other council members that, that put the list together, that's, that should be a priority in the next biennium. I think we've, we're already taking steps, obviously, with the grant application that Jeanie Ash put together. And then, you know, I, also closing down streets to try to help provide restaurants with additional space. So I would like to see helping our community recover from COVID as one of the goals. The other one that we talked about quite a bit in the last, the budget meetings was looking for easy wins, and we used the example of like the pop-up dog park. And then Councilmember Thompson talked about the ability to get volunteers to potentially build out mountain bike trails at Wayne or Norway Hill or wherever. So looking for opportunities where we could still move the needle, but that wouldn't cost a lot of money. So that was another one. And then we all, I think, reiterated wanting to protect the environment. And under that category would be things like the EIS, and also the cleanup of downtown contamination, potentially if we're looking at tree canopy. And then this kind of maybe overlap as well, but there might be some nuance to this. And that is, we talked about protecting and encouraging community identity and health. So there's, it's not a huge difference, but there are areas that, that we felt, we were talked about by the entire council. We also used language that Councilmember McHale discussed in terms of focusing on long-term financial stability and taking steps to eliminate our structural deficit, which might be just parsing words with what, what City Manager had provided. But we did try to kind of look at what the whole discussion was and what was mentioned by multiple people. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I'm not sure if everyone on council was able to read that forwarded email. So, thank you.
All right, there we go. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
This is a discussion, right? So I can way back in? Please say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So Councilmember Dour said it very, very well, and I don't know if everyone had a chance to absorb it and take it in. And I realize there's a reason why we take a whole day to create council goals because it's a big project. My, my concern with the goals that we had in our packet is that they're so broad that it really doesn't speak to specifics that are near and dear to council members' hearts. Now, we have seven cooks in the kitchen, and they all need to have a chance to weigh in on this, and so I don't want to turn it into a whole-day event at eight forty-three in the evening. So I guess my question is to other council members are, have you had a chance to digest this? What resonates with you? And do we have to decide on the goals now, or is there a way we can kind of finesse it and own it more so that we can feel like we have some ownership on, more ownership, let me say that, more ownership on the goals? So that's a question that I'm tossing out there. I am concerned, you know, we don't see environmental issues that are specific to Bothell that we care about. And, and we need to... I, you know, there's the goal here that says foster equitable prosperity for all, and that's so vague, I have a really hard time saying, you know, the count, this is a goal for council versus do we say, you know, in our COVID resp- someone's going to word this better, but COVID responses, and there's a lot of businesses that are stand to stern, north to south, east to west in Bothell that need addressing and support, and I don't feel like we really address this well. So my question is, do y'all think we can decide on this tonight? Or is this something that you have a strategy for us to digest it and come back with something? It's been 45 minutes before July is done.
Okay, I fibbed. I, I'm, I feel like there's some clarification that, that is necessary. So the idea behind the goals is goals are very broad, and they're something that we work on over multiple years. The, the categories are supposed to speak to the community and are used in things like the state of the city and in materials as we communicate, and, and the Bothell Bridge. So it's, it's sort of this, it's, we have a vision for the city, we have a mission, and then we have these goals. And so the goals are the broader, sort of where are we going? Where do you want to take the city? And so it's, you know, you would like to focus on financial fiscal stability. You would like to provide a safe and secure community. And then under that go the priorities. And I didn't take the time, because I didn't want to assume that you would be happy with these goals, to then pin the priorities under each of these. But everything you're talking about fits under each of these goals. So just like we did with the scorecard, you would see the goal, as we did in 2019 and 2020, you would see a goal, and it would be things like we had a technology strategy. It doesn't really mean anything to anybody. We sort of knew, but under that, right, we had a list of things that we were working towards, and we had 10 of those. And so it's the same thing. Again, these are your goals, but just to sort of understand where we were coming from was to say, yes, it's these broad goals, and then to put, we thought that support the health and well-being of our community is, is where we would put our COVID response. We had business resiliency there, and, and that kind of economic support, and the community court, and, and things like that. The foster equitable prosperity was the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative. Affordable housing potentially could go under something like that. Maintaining our infrastructure was, you know, taking care of what we have. And, and so that, all those things fit under that. If, if you're not happy with the wording, that's, that's why it's up for, you know, they're certainly your goals. But, but the specificity comes from strategic objectives and your priorities. So what I was hoping to achieve tonight was that, that you could, you could support some goals, you could identify what those would be, and if you're not ready tonight, you know, we could certainly put that a little bit longer. But to understand your priorities, because that's how I have to put the budget together. So I have July and August, and some part of September to come to you with a final draft budget to say, okay, here are your goals, here are your priorities. Of your 20 priorities, five could be funded, or, or 10. How does that look to you? Are they in the right order? And are there some things you'd like to move around? And maybe there's still a structural deficit? Maybe we were able to fill the gap, maybe not. And then have that final discussion in October, so that then we could come to you with a final budget in November. So that's the process that I'm trying to lay out. I really can't go, so if you don't want to adopt formal goals, we could certainly wait on that, that, that's something we could discuss later, if you, sort of for those, those labels. What I'm really looking for, the goals help me, but what I'm really looking for is your priorities, so I know how to complete the 2122 budget.
No, I appreciate that, and I also understand that, you know, it's part of your budget considerations that you're trying to put together, August, September. So I, I understand that. I, I guess my concern was, was that there's, the goals are so vague that where, where does council weigh in and have ownership on it? And I think, you know, one of the big things that stands out to me is how, where do we speak to protecting the environment on this? Because Bothell, Bothell Council has a few environmental concerns. I mean, we're not going to fix the whole planet in Bothell, but there's a couple spots on, on our little part of the planet that we would like to address, and I'm not sure, you know, maybe you could put it under support the health and well-being of our community, but, but, you know, I also think about, it, it just feels, it just feels too broad for me. It, it could be, it could be lost, and we would never address it. Does that make sense?
But there would be the strategic objectives underneath, so.
Yeah, as long as we can put those underneath there, yeah.
That's the point, right? So you have the goals that, that sort of provide the, the general direction, and then you have your strategic objectives, just like we've done in 2017, 18. We did them in 1920. Then we come, council approves this scorecard. That's what I'm trying to understand now, is what are those things you want to work on? So, so the labels of the goals, you can, you can label them anything you like.
Okay.
Really, it's the strategic objectives are what drive the 2122 budget, and that's what I need to know so that I can, I can complete that budget.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, thank you, thank you, Jennifer. I'm going to yield the floor so the rest of the think tank can weigh in on this, and I can hear what they're thinking about, because I think I've chewed enough, I've ruminated enough. But, but thank you, and I look forward to hearing what everybody else weighs in on.
Councilmember Agnew.
Okay. You know, I, when I first saw the council goals for 2021, 2022, and I saw what they were, I was under the impression that as a council, we decided these things. I, I wasn't aware that three people on the dais made those decisions, and I was offended by that. You know, we all bring something to the table, and we all have the right to have a say at the table. But to have a couple of council members get together and make up council goals for the next two years, I thought was totally inappropriate.
Also, that was, that was not, that was just a suggestion.
Okay? You know, public safety should be one of our priorities. It's not even listed. Our infrastructure on there isn't listed. I, you know, there are certain things that we need to do to the, to the people. I mean, our job is to protect the people in Bothell, to financially be able to do the jobs we need to do. It's, it's not to say that... It's, it's not to say that, you know, I gotta, I gotta have this kind of park or that kind of park. That's a, you know, we're in a ten thousand foot perspective. Our goals should be broad. We should have items underneath that define how we're going to reach these goals. But, you know, I don't understand what's wrong with some of the things that we spent hours thinking about. Focusing on stability, providing a safe and secure community. That's your public safety. Support the health and wellness of the community. We need to do that. Maintain our infrastructure. It's growing. We need to maintain that. It's just going to get nothing but worse if we, we don't. So, you know, I was a little offended by that, but that's just me, you know? But I think we need to sit down and chat about this a lot more than we're chatting about it.
Councilmember Dour.
The intent was not to offend anybody and that's why we asked for it to be sent out. The intent was to kind of take what we thought we heard and eat and how, there only three of us can talk at a time. We all know this, but this is a big discussion. It's complicated. It's hard to have a discussion in a, in a limited amount of time that we have. And so the intent was just, this is what we heard. We tried to take from what other people said that they were interested in. Because what the city manager had kind of summarized at the end of the last meeting didn't sound like what we thought we had heard. But maybe she was talking about priorities instead of goals or whatever. Certainly wasn't meant to offend. It was just try to, to try to kind of summarize what we heard and what stuck up out in our minds from what everyone talked about. And what the labels are, that's fine. As far as the protect the environment, that was a past goal. So I don't know what, why it can't be now it suddenly doesn't meet the criteria for a goal. And, you know, to, to my mind, the goals should be inspirational and should stick out. And, and these are all so vanilla that I, I don't know that they actually capture and brand what, what council's main concerns are. Like, I, I can't imagine not having a goal being to get our community through the COVID pandemic and then help us recover. I mean, to me, that's just, that should be almost the number one goal other than fiscal responsibility. So, I mean, that, I guess that's, that's what I'm concerned about is that responding to COVID is not even on, on the list of goals. Because if that's not, I don't know what else would be.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think when I looked at the list, I said to myself, well, this looks like more your strategic objectives that fit underneath a broad goal. So when you look at financial stability and then you go to a safe and secure community, underneath those are where you put what you intend to do, what you think should be done. So I think, I understand where you're all going, but when I look at these, it was too definite. And it said, do this, maintain what we have, sports fields, equipment vehicles. And then the other was look for easy wins. I saw nothing in, in some of these for what I care about and I think is really important. And that's our young people. Our young people say there's nothing to do in Bothell. And so we need to uncover and separate. Here's the goal. Now underneath that, when we say, what are our strategic objectives? What do we want to do for young people? I think that's where we need to go. The goal is broad, but what's the action under it? That's what I'm looking for.
So I'll say, I mean, looking back at what we did in my first time when we did the council goals, I, I thought we were pretty broad. And then we did the strategic objectives underneath them. I mean, kind of like councilmember McAuliffe and, I mean, councilmember Dour are both saying, I think just in different ways that we then have these specific items. And I think there will be, have to be some horse trading amongst everyone to get a majority of four people that believe strongly in this, in a particular objective. And then the city manager develops our budget on that and tracks it with her, her quarterly updates on it like we, we have been doing. So, I mean, I, there was definitely some in the list that they sent out, you know, with the financial stability, with the speed zone, the school zone cameras. I think that's a strategic objective that we can definitely pursue as well as the red light cameras. I don't have the list in front of me, but there's definitely numerous ones on there that I think are very good strategic objectives that fit under these different goals. And whether we need to add a word or two to the goals, I, I think that's up, you know, up to us to do that, to wordsmith our goals, what we need. But I think finding these objectives and what we feel the community needs from us and direct the city manager in building the, the draft budget for our review in September is, is what we're trying to do. And yeah, that's the challenge of not having a quorum. And so I, I think the three council members that got together, I mean, they, they got a list that they could agree with. And so they just have to pull one other person over for some of these. I don't think they were trying to, you know, develop anything definitive. I think it was just kind of some easy items. I think multiple, lots of them on there are easy, easy wins for everybody to agree on, so. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify that the intent of us getting together and talking was to have more of a process like we normally, where, well, at least as far as I understand it, where we get down and have a conversation about what our goals are. Unfortunately, only three of us can do that at a time and we didn't really have a normal forum to do that this year. This wasn't meant to be a take it or leave it. This is, was meant to be a, here's what we heard everybody talk about and like this is how we would word it as part of a conversation. I also want to push back a little bit on the idea that goals need to be really broad. I mean, if, if we have five goals that encompass everything that we do, everything can't be our goal. Like, of course, we want to have, you know, good public safety. Like, there are lots of things that we need to do well that are important, but goals are really more specific things that we think our community needs right now for the next biennium. Like, what, what are the people that voted for us asking us for right now? And if everything is your goal, nothing is actually your goal. Like, you can't have a goal, set of goals that is so broad and encompasses everything and still like have a specific goal that you want to accomplish. So I, I would say like the goals should be specific enough that we should be able to like measure them. Like, did we do things like that actually accomplished this specific thing? Not like, did we do good things in general and which tent is it falling? The other thing I wanted to address, I'm really happy to see that the extra planner was added on here. That's actually one of the things that I wanted to address. I, I think the planning department being stripped really to bare bones and just being able to do what's legally required in a time where we need to be able to do more with fewer resources is a bad idea. I think the planning department is a lot of the way we can kind of get to some of the easy wins. Some of the things where we need to be smarter, leaner and more efficient, they're the ones that can help us get there. So I am in complete support of making sure that we hire that extra planner. Also, this is how council accomplishes all of the goals that we're talking about. You know, without a planning department, we can't, you know, represent the people that elected us. If the only thing that our planning department can do is what's legally required. I would generally agree with the idea that it seems like we need more of a conversation around this. We haven't really had the opportunity to have a conversation around any of these goals. It's just been in this kind of awkward format where somebody speaks and then somebody else speaks and they may have it related or not. And then we have to try to compile those into something that we all agree in. And that's, that's just a really difficult process. So, I mean, I would love to chat through some of these things. Councilmember Agnew mentioned public safety. I mean, there's, councilmember McAuliffe mentioned youth. Like, these are, these are conversations that I would love to have. And if we need to change and amend some of what these are, I think we should have goals that are actual things we want to accomplish, not just categories that we put other things underneath.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start off by saying that I've been part of the, the goal setting process since the city manager's been here and put it together for us the very first time. And the reason why I love the process is because it's sausage making. We all go through and we say things that mean something to us. And when we're a body of seven and we're sitting virtually or on the dais, we have the opportunity to say things that we care about, things that are near and dear to us. But hopefully we're saying things that are important to our community. And so by going through the process of sausage making, we come out with a link at the other end. And I believe the information in our packet is the first take at that link. A link of what we all came up with, what we all talked about. No, it's not a hundred percent perfect, but it's the same process we went through the last two times. And I don't know, this would be the first time I'm hearing that that process didn't work for us the last time or the time before. So I'd be curious, did it, did it work for us last time, the time before or not? Because to me, open and transparent government is the single most important thing that we can be doing as councilmen. We've been in a very, we came from a very bad place. We've straightened our council out and we've done some great things. We have the trust of our community. We've passed a public safety levy. We passed a senior center levy. These are all things. We, we bought a golf course, an eight acre park along the river. We've been doing great things. And those great things that we've been doing, we've been doing by having conversations together on the dais or recently virtually. As councilmember Agnew put it, he's, he's a little offended. I'm more than offended because I want to be part of the conversation. I never, as a council member, ever want to feel like I'm excluded from a conversation that should be open and transparent. And that's what our community is expecting. They're expecting anything different. I'd love to hear from them. But I think everybody who's come and spoke to us wants to know what we're talking about and how we're talking about it. And we talk about it on the dais. That's the open and transparent piece of it. We all want to support the environment? Yeah. Do we all want to support bike trails? Yeah. All the things that are in the list that I received today, this afternoon, are all things that I'm supportive of. But can we afford them all? No. Can we work on them all? No. Did we work on all of our goals and accomplish all of our goals from the last four years that I've been on the dais? No. But we've made great strides. We've done a ton of great things. So I, I'm a little, I gotta be quite honest. I'm, I'm a little taken back by this, the process. And I want to give the benefit of the doubt that this list that I received is a list that was just done for talking points. Because there's several things that are not on this list that I believe our community would be extremely upset that are not on our goals. And when we send a list like this in email format and it doesn't say draft, it just is a council goals for twenty-one, twenty-two, and somebody gets a hold of that, is that our goals? Is that our goals? Because to me, that's not our goals. That's not what we, as a body of seven, decided. And right now, there's a public document that was sent to me today that says council goals for twenty-one, twenty-two. I, I don't know how to take that. So I want to make sure that when we're putting documents out, we're putting documents out that are drafts, under review, whatever we got to put on them to ensure that people in our community don't get a hold of that through a public records request and say that's our goals. Councilmember Agnew spoke about public safety. Public safety is not on here. Why? Our community just passed a levy. We just talked about our fire stations. Why are these things not on our goals? I, I don't even know what to say about the equity and inclusion piece that's not on here. If, if I'm getting a sense from this body of seven of us that that is not a priority, I would love to hear that from all six of you right now, that that is not a priority for, of you, that you don't want that on there. I believe it is a priority of yours. I believe everything on this list is a priority. I believe everything on this list is a goal. I believe everything on the list the city manager put forward is a goal. I don't care how you categorize it. These are our goals. We not make them all, but we have to have an open conversation. That's what we're elected to do and we need to do it publicly. So I, I'm a little frustrated right now, but, but I want to give the benefit of the doubt that we're going to continue to talk about these goals. We're going to continue to give the city manager the respect that she deserves for all the hard work that her and the city staff have been doing and ensuring that our goals are heard. We're heard. Our voices are heard. There's other councils out there that don't get heard by their city managers, their staff. We're heard by ours. And it's important that we don't lose that trust, not only of our city staff, but of our community, that we work together, together. We are better together. And I, I'm just, I'm very frustrated right now by how this has happened. And, you know, again, I want to give the benefit of the doubt that these are just talking points, but we've been through this process before, once before for several of you council members. I've been through this process twice and I, I trust the process. And, and there's a whole lot that we need to, we just heard it tonight about body cams. We can't afford four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of body cams. Body cameras are near and dear to me because of things that I've been through in my life. But I understand we have a budget in the city and I'm, I'm not going to put my personal agenda, personal items in front of the items of the entire community. I'm going to listen to my community. I'm going to listen to all of you. And if we all agree that these things are important, they're goals of ours, we pull, put them forward. But we do it together. We don't do it as a body of two or three. And when we say that there's no time to do that, there's all the time in the world to do it. We can get together anytime we want as a body of seven and have a special meeting and talk about goals. There's nothing stopping us from doing that. If we want to come and meet in August and talk about goals, we can come in August and talk about goals. There's nothing stopping us from doing that. But together, we're better. To do it independently without each other, especially on this, when it's our goals, the things that are important to our community, they're our goals. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Dour.
So I would say this process is not the same at all because typically we have a full day conversation about goals. That's not the way it played out this time. So that's not the same process. It's certainly not the same process, process that James, you and I went through and Tom when Bob Jean was here and it was completely different. So I, I think that's a little bit unfair to say it's the same process because it's not. And then as far as, you know, public safety or equity, you know, protect and encouraging community identity and health is broad enough that those, those items would fall under it. So this outrage, I think, is ill-placed and certainly not what the intent was. It was talking points, my mistake for not putting draft in, but I asked that it be sent to everybody purposely so that you guys would know what we were talking about and it wouldn't be any, you know, mystery or surprise or whatever. It was, I asked specifically, how can we get it to the council members? And this list was put together before the packet came out. We, we talked about it. So, you know, no offense meant clearly offense taken. You can either believe us or, or not believe us. That's, it's up to you. But I mean, there's plenty of room for change in what those goals are, what falls under them.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. For clarification, councilmember, please do not use the word outrage. Wrong tone.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
You know, I, I understand that this is difficult. Last time we did goals, we sat around the room, all of us together. City manager Jennifer Phillips put up the list and we kind of broke everything down into what we wanted to see the goals look like. Not the goals, I'm sorry, what was going to be under each. Not the goals, I'm sorry, what was gonna be under each goal, correct? So like, I think she talked about the strategic objectives. So we did that, and that was the way to do it, that we could all be included. Maybe what we, I'm just gonna suggest, maybe what we could do is chase the goals that our city manager brought before us and kind of, each of us submit our, what we think are our objectives underneath those, so that then we could talk about it. If each of us are able to kind of communicate to the city manager, and then she can kind of put those together, and then we could kind of go through it. Because there's gotta be a good process here, and it's difficult when we're not all together in a room. But I'm just trying to figure out what would be the easiest way for all of us to communicate and, and, and accomplish what we all want to accomplish together.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
For, for, I, I, I understand Councilmember McNeil's passion, but it, I, I have to tell you that you might want to go back and review the tape, because it, it doesn't, you, you've come across on camera very, very aggressive here, and I don't, I think you have very strong feelings, and they, they weren't communicated well. And we, we want to be a cohesive group, also want to hear, I've made notes about what people have, have been talking about, all good points. I think that was the frustration that we had, because we couldn't have a quorum of how do we get the creative juices going and still create goals? Now, Councilmember McAuliffe, I, if I'm understanding you, maybe the thing for us to do, our homework, is to say what's important to us, and see if we can find a spot for it in the goals that were in our packet. If there's a spot for the things that are near and dear to us, that are on our packet, great. If there are not, then next time we get together, we can have this conversation again and say, this is a really important item to me, can we create this goal? Get a consensus? If we don't get a consensus, then, you know, save it for 2021 or 2022. So, but, I, I, I see that as workable of, find the goals that are, the items that are important to us, do they fit in the packet? And if they don't, then come back and have a conversation about, see if we can find four more people about creating yet another goal. That seems like a good strategy, and we'll be done, we'll be done with it in the next conversation.
So I'd, I'd say, in our packet, the city manager, you know, attempted to pull what she heard about some priorities, you know, you know, whether or not the goals are the right words, but there, there's a list of priorities. I mean, it's a, I'm not sure, there's more than 10, less than 20 on there, but there's quite a few achievable ones, and I think one of our, our intents tonight were to see what we could come to as a majority on some of these priorities. Whether there's, we can come to a majority on agreeing with them, or if there's a majority of people that don't agree with them. I mean, you know, we've heard from some of the people that one of these priorities, the... Looking at the list, always purchasing body cameras for police officers. I, you know, we've hearing that from people that it, it's not as desirable, and it might not be a, a council priority. I was hoping that we could eliminate some of these, and then if there's a majority, to add some on here, and continue with that process. And I do believe, you know, that the, the group that met together, they were doing it with good intentions, and they were trying to have some of that brainstorming and togetherness that we were able to do in our last goal-setting opportunity where we were all together, which we can't do now, and we're having this challenging, just online, attempt at what we did, and I thought we were pretty successful with two years ago. So I don't know if anyone still has thoughts about the priorities that were in the packet, that we could still give the direct, direction to the city manager. I, I think the suggestion of making a list and sending them in gets a little dicey on OPMA. I mean, we would have to probably make our own list and then get together and have it in a pretty thought-out way then, that we could, you know, have it all digested and go through them in an orderly fashion, more so. I think that was the city manager's intent tonight, was to go through our list, see what we could agree with, see what needed to put a priority for the timer on city council chambers to be a little more accessible, flexible with us. So, yeah, so I was hoping we could still salvage this in this meeting, but if not, I think we just need to figure out how we can in this online meeting time. So Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Would you like us to weigh in on the list that was in our packet? There's two things that, there's two things on the packet.
Hold on one second, I just wanna maybe city manager to react what I said, and...
So the list wasn't intended to be all-inclusive. What I had done at the end of the workshop was, and I know that everyone was tired, is I had kept notes through the whole three days, so 12 hours together, I kept notes as I heard consensus. That was, that doesn't mean that councilmembers didn't bring individual items up or express support or interest for individual items. So the list that I provided in the agenda bill was what I heard consensus on, and also what I did the summary presentation or list of at the end of the workshop. And I looked for the council to say, yes, those were things that, that were of interest, so that I, I said, this is what I heard consensus on, this is, I can't remember my exact words, but this is through, through the last three days, this is what I'm hearing as priorities that have emerged from, from the three days of discussion during the budget workshop. And, and as you can see from the recommendation, it's, it's much broader. So I'm looking for, I, my, my thought was that each councilmember would bring your list of priorities to identify and have a discussion about. It's not, it wasn't intended to be an all-inclusive list, which was an opportunity for anyone to champion any of their issues. So as you can see, it says, provide policy direction on program and service priorities and revenue enhancements. I don't, I don't have any revenue enhancements on this list, because I didn't hear any consensus, but I wanted to be sure that, that council, you know, understood that this was the opportunity to, to share those things again, so that we can put the, the budget together for your, for your review in October. So if, you know, if the council's not ready tonight, you know, we can postpone this until next week. I can try to rework some of the goals. I'm not quite sure what expectations are, but each of you can go back, as, as Councilmember McAuliffe recommended, go back and, and create your own set of goals based on, on whatever you heard, or whatever your, your constituents and what's important to you, and the, and the priorities. But I, again, the, the goals we can, and I, and I, I'm very respectful, I mean, this process has been really difficult. I mean, normally, we would have had this in January, February. It starts off the year. We would have refined the 2020 goals and started to talk about 21, 22. We had some scheduling challenges in January, February, and weren't able to have it during that period of time, and so we postponed it till March, and then sure enough, you know, COVID hit, and so we had to cancel. We didn't have a choice. We were in a stay-at-home order by the governor, so we had to cancel that, that meeting. So if, if there was something else that council would like, this is the first time I've heard that there's been dissatisfaction or that the council has felt, felt pressured, as I talked about this through the budget workshop, and that's why we spent 12 hours together, was to, to give you hopefully the materials to help you identify what those priorities are. But if there is something more than I can add, if we'd like to add a, a meeting at the end of July, you know, we can, we can add more time. I can certainly continue this on to the July 14th meeting. If there's anything that I can do to be of assistance, it is very difficult virtually, so we're, we're trying to have, I mean, I, I think both Councilmember McNeil and Councilmember Dewar are correct. It's different, but it's the same. I'm, I'm trying to have some normalcy in following the process that I followed before. I've done this twice with the council, but in a, in a, in a very bizarre format, and, and so if it's not meeting council expectations, I apologize for that. And, and if there's something more that I can do, you know, please let me know. But really, the, the, what I'm really looking for are, are the priorities so that I can put the budget together, and, and that's really quite timely. Moving into August will be really challenging, because August was really the time that I need to work with the, with the finance director. We have a tremendous amount of work to do to get through the nitty-gritty of figuring out exactly what we can and can't afford, and putting that budget together, and, and I need August and September to be able to do that. So I, I would need something by the end of July with regards to your priorities. Again, if, if you don't use the goals from last year, you can, you can come up with new goals, we can, can certainly postpone that portion of it, but the priorities really are quite timely at this point.
Thank you, city manager. As we're really realizing these online meetings are challenging in more ways than we could have ever imagined.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I'm extremely disappointed in tonight's council meeting for a couple reasons. The first one, there's two words that were actually used tonight during the council meeting, when I spoke about how I felt about something. Other councilmembers speak about how they feel about things all the time, and I don't interject those councilmembers, and I do not belittle them, and I do not attack them. And tonight, there was two, two words used against me. One was aggressive, and the other one, Councilmember Dewar's, and I'm not gonna repeat that word. But I'm gonna tell you, I'm offended by them. As a councilmember, I represent 47,000 people in my community, okay? And I have the right to voice how I feel about something. We don't always have to agree, but we, we must listen to one another. And whether I get passionate about it, and I speak in a very passionate way, that's not being aggressive towards any one person, that's, that's explaining how I feel about something. And so I'm offended on, in tonight's council meeting, and I hope we, as a council, do better in listening to one another and understanding where we're coming from, because to have those words told to you as a councilmember, those words will not go unchecked. And so I hope we can all do better based on this. As far as the goal-setting policy, it might not be exactly the same as what we've done in the past, nothing that we do is exactly the same. But there is a process that we can go through to get us to where we need to be, and to ensure that it's all-inclusive. And I think that's what we're striving for, not only with the goal-setting process, but everything that we do within our city, is to be all-inclusive and to be transparent. So if I can leave you with anything, I'll leave you with that piece of it, Mr. Mayor, is that we need to be inclusive, we need to make sure that everybody's voice is heard on council, and we need to make sure that we're not using words that are, that make other councilmembers feel like they're being attacked.
Councilmember Thompson.
I'd say that we need a little bit more time, and we need to figure out a way where we can all get together and talk about what we want our priorities to be. I'm not aware that anybody doesn't want everybody to be heard. We just haven't been able to get in a room and have a conversation. I'd, I'd love to have some sort of meeting where we could get together and talk about goals in a little bit more free-form format. I'd be interested in trying to meet in person outside with masks socially distant, that might be a little easier than doing it virtually, if that is something that's amenable to everybody. But I, I, I don't see us coming to any sort of a conclusion on what our goals are as a body tonight. So I, I'd be in support of either adding this to a future agenda or adding a meeting, you know, the Fourth of Tuesday in July, so we can get it by the time the city manager says, she says, when she does need it, to be able to do her job.
Councilmember, Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think this just kind of threw us off tonight. You know, we were focusing on the council goals for 2021, 22, that were sent by three councilmembers, so it just kind of threw us off track. And I think if we had stayed on track with the goals that our city manager put before us, and then put underneath those more specifically what we want to see accomplished, that's what we could do the next meeting, and I would suggest that.
All right, it's, it's definitely sounding like people need more time with this, these priorities. I think as part of this discussion and clarifying what kind of direction we need to provide to the city manager, how do you feel about...
So we have a couple of options. If council's interested in, in more work, so I didn't, I didn't want to overstep my bounds, so again, I'm, these are council goals and council priorities, so I didn't want to apply strategic objectives or the priorities to the goals, because I didn't want it to feel like it, it was coming from me. I was trying to provide the, sort of the, the material and, and have the council have the discussion and, and apply them then to the goals. If that's something that you're looking for, I would ask that we then meet on the 21st and give me some time to re-review the goals and try to then attach the strategic objectives. The challenging part is, as, as Councilmember McNeil said, much of this is unaffordable. So the worry that I have about attaching them, any of the strategic objectives or priorities to goals, is, it gives the perception that these are achievable things. We're not even at that point yet, because I don't know what's affordable. I mean, as we talked about over, over the three days, we have a $12 million gap. We've got some strategies to try to cut that in half, but we're still looking at a multimillion-dollar deficit, and there's a list of things that, that, that aren't in the budget. So there's new initiatives, new things, I don't even know it's affordable. So I'm, I'm, again, it's, it's really about helping to, to craft the budget and, and really what are the priorities? Because as I go through and, and put this budget together, when I run out of money, I have to figure out, okay, so I have to run, I have to fund the machine, which I always talk about is about, you know, 80, 85% of what we do is the machine. And so there's very little discretionary money left, and with that discretionary money, which of your priorities can we afford? How creative can I get? What portion of them? That's really the meat of what I'm looking for, and so I really need those to, to better understand how I'm supposed to put this budget together. So I'm, I'm sorry that the process isn't working, and I'm, I'm not quite sure what would be helpful to, to move this along, and I think maybe it's, it's, it's not having the goals right now, and maybe we push those aside, because there seems to be different philosophies about sort of whether those goals should be measurable or not, or they should be short-term. You know, goals are generally longer-term, they're something that, that a, that a organization in a community works for over a longer period of time. It's, they're usually, you know, five-to-seven-year or 10-year goals. You know, when you protect the environment, you do that for years, you don't do it in a two-year period. So if the council's more interested in short-term goals, because we do have such a budget crisis, and you want things that are more measurable, like responding to the COVID crisis, maybe that's part of, of where we're sort of getting stuck, is I was looking at five-to-10-year goals that aren't, that, they're not measured, they're, they're achieved through years of, of hard work and strategic objectives and priorities. So maybe if we push the goals aside and we just try to focus on priorities of things that you would like to try to see happen in 2021, maybe that would be a better way to pare it down. And then, once it's pared down in, in September, October, and we see what's, what's affordable and what, what is in the budget, maybe from that, then, the goals could rise out of that, and, and we could see then sort of what that looks like. So maybe we reverse engineer it.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, what you just suggested sounds spot-on to me. And I think, you know, my, my first council goal-setting was exactly that. We had priorities, and then we each got, I think it was, three or four dots, and we, as coun, as councilmembers, we each went through and put where our dot, you know, what were priorities to us, and... and put where our dot, you know, what were priorities to us. And then they were, you know, budgeted as far deep as they could go. And then the, the goals were created based on what it appeared to be those priority categories fit into. So that's, to me, that sounds spot-on, because I think we are getting stuck on, on what goals are and what priorities are. And so I, I would be fully in support of a process that was similar to that. And I think that would help you to have more clarity on what, what we agree on, what we don't agree on. But again, that, that's kind of an in-person thing, so I don't know if, if we're able to do that. But that sounds a lot more comfortable to me in terms of, of a process. So I appreciate your, your thought on that.
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
As one engineer daughter's speaking to another engineer's daughter, reverse engineering makes perfect sense on this. So I'm with Councilmember Duer that, that I think that that's a great strategy for approaching this, and no more feathers have to be ruffled, and we can all start paddling the same direction. So, thank you.
So, July twenty-first, I believe you said, will...
And I guess, you know, technically, we're all supposed to hold every Tuesday evening free. So if we can't get through it on July twenty-first, then we could roll over and add a special meeting for the July twenty-eighth evening.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I really appreciate what you just said, Jennifer. And has, and could you give us clear direction? What would you like us to bring to the meeting on July twenty-first? So should we discuss with you our priorities and then talk about what we could afford or prior to that meeting? Or should we just bring a list of priorities? So could you just, I really want to get us on track here. So if you could be just a little bit more specific and clear.
I would, what I would try to do is identify, this list is, I've heard feedback that, that there are some council members that feel this list is inadequate that was provided in the Agenda Bill. So I'll try to go back and, and try to figure out which items might be missing. But really, what I would ask on the twenty-first is that each council member, and I, I think because of the transparency issue that, that came up tonight, that it not be discussed with me, that, that you look at what you think the priority should be for '21 and '22, and you bring those to the meeting on July twenty-first. And, and I'll attempt to, to broaden this list of priorities and, and be a little more specific on some things and, and see if that helps with the discussion as well. But if there's things that are important to you, and they're not on this list, that you're prepared to speak to those and, and work with the council to get consensus on sort of what, what those priorities are.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, do we have a way to screen share during our meetings?
Yes, we do. Each, each, each one of you would have that, yes.
So we would, we could potentially, Councilmember Duer brought up the, the way that we did it in the past, where we had the dots that we kind of placed on there. There may be an opportunity for us to just kind of have a, a whole list, pick from that list or something, and just say which ones are important to us. Or how, how do you envision us doing that, to be respectful of everyone's time?
Yeah. And I don't know. That, that's a great idea. I mean, I could, I could have it on my computer, and I would share that then. And, and so there would be a live, as, as council members are talking, I could, I could add a dot or add a caricature to, to line, so you can sort of see what was culminating. Or each, each council member could take a turn and then tell me where to put their thoughts. And I could do the dots in colors for, for each council member. I'd, I, I'm, I'm sort of caught off guard, so I'd have to give that some thought. But I, I think there's certainly some potential to work off of a live document that could be shared with, with the community and the council at the same time.
Okay. I just thought, you know, Councilmember Duer brought that up. I thought that, you know, that we could maybe do something like that. It might be kind of cool for us to interact with one another during that process, so.
Yeah, that, that's really helpful. Great ideas.
Yeah. Do some of the count, conference rooms have cameras that can broadcast onto this? Like with the whiteboards at the same time?
No, it doesn't. I don't, I don't think so. It'd have to work off of my, I'd have to work off of my screen, which I can do. And so I just have, would have documents up there, and, and the council would have the discussion. And as people say things, I could add it to the list, and then we could figure out a way to do the dots.
Yeah.
At this point, we're not able to meet in person. Ellen I has issued a, an order that basically, until Phase Three comes where public buildings are open, employees are not allowed to interact with the public. And so there's no way for us to get together, because I would have to be there, and, and the clerk would have to be there. And, and currently, that would not fall in line with the parameters that's been given by Ellen I. I believe that's correct, right, Paul? The City Attorney, it was Ellen I who issued that?
We would not be able to meet in person at this point.
Right. As, as much as we would love to, we're, we're just legally not allowed to. Even, even outside, even with masks, even, we're, we're just legally not allowed to.
All right. That's sounding like our game plan forward with this agenda item. So, well, that was our last item on our agenda for the evening. Councilmember Duer?
Actually, I'm sorry to interrupt. I actually, council conversations is on the agenda.
Oh, never mind.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Byrne. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to have a brief discussion around the Fourth of July this year. Wanted to thank Councilmembers Zornz and McAuliffe. At the council's direction, we had a brief conversation about what we wanted to do with fireworks. And I wanted to just talk about a small conversation that I had at the SCA Board Meeting the other day, and having conversations around fireworks in other communities such as Mamish, Kenmore, Redmond, and Auburn, to name a few. And what, the takeaway was from that conversation was, the majority of those cities, all but Auburn, have banned fireworks within their communities. And in those communities, they all brought up the point that this year was the, one of the loudest years they've ever had within their communities. And the conversation stemmed around them thinking that it came from the fact that everybody, all the shows were shut down. And so people were actually lighting those fireworks off personally. They didn't get into facts about any personal or property damage, but I was able to talk to our chief, and it sounds like we did have a, a tree fire, but no structure or significant injuries at the time that I spoke to him, which was a, a couple of days ago. So a bit of good news, I mean, a tree fire is not, not good. But I guess the reason I'm bringing this up is because I also, during our advisory vote that we did, we got Councilmember Zorn, or Deputy Mayor Zornz, I should say, I apologize, Deputy Mayor, I said Councilmember Zornz. Deputy Mayor Zornz and I received information on how many people were in favor or who were opposed to the ban. And I was, I will speak for myself, very surprised that there was a fourteen, one thousand four hundred-plus difference that did not want to ban fireworks in our community. And so when we look at percentages, fifty-three percent, fifty-two percent, it does, it looks pretty close. It's a, it's a percentage. But when we look at overall numbers of how many people actually sent us emails to the number of people that voted to not ban it, I think for, for me personally, I, I believe that we did a good job this year listening to our community. That's not to say that we don't have issues within our community, people with PTSD, animals and things like that, that we need, we need to look after. I think it's important that we always are concerned about that in public safety. But I think it's just important for our community to fully understand that even if we took the step to ban fireworks within our community, that that's not going to stop people from lighting fireworks off in our community. And even if we ban the sell, purchase and sell of fireworks within our community, that's not to say that people will not go to reservations and bring fireworks back to our community. But I just wanted to give everybody an update. The mayor of Auburn is going to report back to us, because they had a, an influx in reservation sales this year. They work closely with the reservation to understand what's going, you know, what's being sold with where. So I'll let everybody know that. But I just, I just wanted to, to let everybody know that while it's not perfect, I'm happy to hear that we didn't have any serious bodily injuries this year.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring forward some information about the needs in our community and how they're being served. So we have the East-West Food Rescue Program. It was started by George A. Hearn, who is an owner of a building on Main Street, on the Yogo Studio. And they had carloads and truckloads of people going over eastern, to Eastern Mount, Eastern Washington, and bringing back over three hundred and fifty thousand potatoes and onions and apples and eggs, and distributed them to the food bank. And I think it's important that we recognize that these people organized and helped so many people. Also, it shows a great need in our community. North Shore School Foundation had seven hundred families that they took, that they supplied food for, that are in the school district, and some of those are definitely Bothell families. So I just wanted to put this in front of us as we think about the needs of our community and people who are serving them, and show my appreciation to what they're doing. I have one more piece of appreciation that I want to talk about, and that is our Safe Streets and School Levy. And I want to thank Erin and her crew, because the street from Bothell High School, Hundred Eightieth, to Hundred Ninety-Sixth, up to West Hill, Eighty-Eighth Avenue Northeast, the sidewalk is so much better. They have improved it. They've taken away the cracks and the, and all of the horrible pieces of broken concrete. And, and a lot of people walk that. And so I want people to know that, that, that levy really does help our community. And I want to thank Erin and her team for doing that.
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Oh, I've got a few items here. And I'll try to go, I'll try to give it some gas. One is, I hope we can get just a list of, as the, just of the fire station, we do get a list of the lead items that are met. That would be a good thing to have when, when the opportunity avails itself. And then also to thank Jeannie Ash. I got a chance to participate in the Business COVID Distribution Kit. So well-thought-out and so much fun. And there's room for more businesses if they, at least there was last week when we did that, that if there's businesses that missed it, missed out on their free kit, call Jeannie Ash. And then to speak to what Councilmember McNeil was talking about, it's interesting on fireworks. One, I hope, Deputy, that our City Manager, at some point here in the month of July, we can get a list of, because we seem to get that every year, a list of the, of the calls that our fire makes. And maybe if there's, if we can include the police calls on that. As an aside, I went and talked to the owner of the fireworks stand that was up at Canyon Park. And she told me some, an interesting stat, which confirms what Councilmember McNeil was saying, was that there was a study that came out that said, when you make fireworks illegal, sales of illegals goes up, where people are wanting to get fireworks. If they have access to illegals, those sales of illegals go up. So it, at some point, I think we ought to talk about revisit, can we do a modified version of, of fireworks? And maybe not. And then this last one, it's, it's a comparative freebie, and it may sound silly. And I'm going to preface it with a really dumb story, but it's going to hopefully make sense. When we first moved to Bothell, there was always a heron, there still is, a heron that flies up and down over, you know, through downtown. And I would say to my kids, oh, look, there's Hank Heron, you know? And they would go, oh, Mom, stop. Boring joke. So flash forward to COVID, and Kenmore has a mascot. And it's a heron. And they named it Hank Heron. So I'm feeling a little robbed of Hank Heron. But that got me to thinking, and nobody suggests crows, because I will find you, I will hunt you down. Could we, you know, maybe our volunteer coordinator could do this, and it's, you know, comparatively free, have a contest to choose a mascot for Bothell. And I wrote down, like a Chinook salmon, or Pacific tree frog, or Northwestern salamander, or whatever. Could we set a contest for, you know, narrowing it down to maybe three mascots, and people vote on it, and then we choose it. And then we choose, and then we have name suggestions, and we choose a name. And then somebody gets bragging rights. We have, I've been in, you know, middle school kids, even elementary school kids, but, and high school kids. We have some great artists out there that could generate a logo. And we would pick the design, and they would get bragging rights that they, that they developed it. And then voila, Bothell has a mascot. I think would be really cool. So anyway, ruminate on it. If you think it's a dumb idea, then, you know, it's a dumb idea. But if you think it's something that would be fun for the community, we should do it. So that's it. I yield the floor.
Yeah, I think there's a bear and a bobcat both roaming around in the city right now that might want to be famous. But Councilmember Duer?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think it's a fabulous idea. I think anything we can do to bring the community together and feel like a community is great. I personally think it has to be a crow, but we can argue about that later. Anyway, I think that's a great idea. I wanted to bring up how well the picnic tables that have been placed on Main Street have been used. And I would like to propose that perhaps we could use some CARES money to purchase a few more picnic tables, maybe two or three, and stagger them on Main Street. Since it sounds as though the ability for us to close Main Street is really a challenge that, and for some legal reasons and some logistical reasons, that we're just not going to be able to overcome. It would be nice if we could provide some more community spaces for takeout, for those businesses that won't have that advantage. So I wanted to throw that out. And then the other thing I wanted to throw out is to request that we look at, before EF&amp;G goes on the market, that we seriously consider opening up the downtown plan and putting in place some requirements, so that we get the gateway elements that we all agreed that we wanted for those projects on 527, that are our front-facing, our front face to the world, as people rush by on 522, to invite them into Bothell and to create identity. We're not going to get that on Lot D unless we have a really amenable developer. So I just wanted to bring that up. That, that's something we need to do if we're indeed all serious about having a gateway tower or whatever element. You know, we went through that entire exercise with Director Kaderman. We all agreed that that's what we wanted. And then we didn't follow through by opening up the downtown plan to, to do that. So it, I don't think it has to be done this year, but I think it needs to get on the docket. So those two items, I would love to hear if there's support for those two things, if you wouldn't mind. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Uh, yes, support a couple more picnic tables, a few more to fill in the gaps. People are clamoring for more places and it's a challenge. So if CARE money supports that, yes. And yes, open up the downtown plan and get gateway language in there. So yes, two yeses.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. So there's a couple of things that I forgot to bring up. One was, I just wanted to thank everybody at our city for all the hard work and efforts that they're putting in during this pandemic. You know, we've got people on furlough, but just the city staff, I mean, hats off, amazing job. I mean, I serve on a lot of regional committees and I hear the struggles out there throughout our region with other cities. And just the amazing work that we're doing here locally in Bothell. City Manager, I just wanted you to know that it goes noticed by others in our region how well we're doing and holding it together. So thank you to all your, your staff and, and you for all the hard work and efforts that you're putting in. You know, together we can do amazing things and, you know, Councilmember Doer spoke about the, you know, positivity of Main Street, the things that are happening there. So just continuing to spread the positive message and working together for our entire community, I think is important. I also wanted to let council know that I am going to be hosting a facilitator for several kids in the North Shore School District, grades three, four, five. We may move up to sixth grade as well. It'll be a roundtable. I'll be interviewing kids to have a discussion, roundtable discussion on race and equity. So stay tuned for more information on that. That'll be coming up. I'll be working with probably 20 kids within the North Shore School District to start a conversation around the things that they're experiencing within the school. And then this Friday, SCA is putting on an event, a panelist event, which I'll be one of the panelists on racial equity and justice. This is series number one. And it's local elected officials of color. I will be on that panel with Lea Dawson from Federal Way, Jeremy Barksdale from Bellevue, Bill Boyce Kent, Brenda Fisher from Kent, myself, Ed Prince from Rinton and DeShawn Quinn from Tukwila. I, all of you, please tune into that. We're going to talk about our experiences, where we've come from. We're all local guys here and gals. And just talk about the things that we've had to overcome and the things that, you know, have happened to us, to our stories. So then it will engage into policing and youth as well. So it's, it's going to be a wonderful series. I hope you all can tune in. And, and lastly, I just want to say to the entire council, thank you for your leadership and everything you do. I know you do it from the heart on behalf of the community. Sometimes we have tough, tough, tough decisions and discussions that we have to, to, to work together on. But from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate each and every one of you, regardless of how tough the conversation gets. You're all near and dear to me. So, thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
I just wanted to chime in that I very much liked both of Councilmember Doer's ideas. Picnic tables are a really easy way to get more people able to enjoy what we've done on Main Street already. And I, I do think we should open up the downtown plan and take a look at that before we sell Lot EFNG.
So I'll, I'll just weigh in on the picnic tables. I mean, I think, you know, having a discussion with the owner of Hop and Hound, he made, you know, some points, I think for himself, that he thought that, you know, Main Street was getting more attention, you know, and there's other parts of the cities that aren't. So I mean, I'd be interested if, you know, the, the reception that we've had for picnic tables in Main Street, I don't, I don't know if there's any other places, but it, it seems like we should be more equitable, equitable than we are with Main Street. I mean, it was a, it was an easy place to get that block. But it just, it just feels like that we're picking and choosing too much. And I, I think there's, if we can find some opportunities for other places, it seems like we should be doing that, helping out more where we can. And as far as the gateway language, I mean, we, we definitely went through the process and I think we were all very much in favor of having some look and feel for those kind of marquee properties. So I know it's been brought up before, but if it's not in there, I, I think it should be. I mean, I had the impression it was, but it sounds like Councilmember Doer says it isn't. And I mean, I just made a note to myself to look into that further. But I, I think it's, I know that was the intention of, of that process, but I, I know also that we are looking to balance that with, you know, not putting too many restrictions on the the developer, but I don't know, that's a hard choice. But I think it's a discussion that needs to happen because these are some unique properties and, you know, once in a lifetime, most likely, once in a generation, if not. Anyone else? Councilmember Doer?
I appreciate your point about treating Main Street differently. But in fact, the reason I'm making the suggestion about picnic tables is so that places like Julio's and Revolve and Graham's Royal Tea can still have a takeout business and people can eat on Main Street and still be part of it, even though they don't have outdoor space. Because I, I would have done it. I went to Main Street the first week it was open. The bind had a, had a line. I couldn't get in. So I went to Julio's. But at the time, there was nowhere to sit to eat it. So I brought it home. So that, that's the reason. I, I mean, I understand you wanting to spread the wealth. If we had another street closed down or another location, I'd be in favor of that too. But just so you know, that was kind of my intent, was to provide some sort of place that these restaurants could still get takeout business and, and their patrons could still enjoy the atmosphere of Main Street. So, thanks.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And yes, I agree that it was an opportunity for the cottage to actually be able to be in the parking lot. Not all of the parking lot owners are going to allow that. But the Main Street where Hanasushi is, a few picnic tables there, because they also do takeout. I think that's a great idea. And also for Revolve and Julio's. That's, that's, I think that's something that they'll really appreciate.
All right, looks like we're winding down. Not seeing anyone with any more topics. No more cards? Councilmember Doer?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none? Everyone in favor? Thumbs up? Nod? All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.